President.
Justy Hernandez.
Here.
Justy Hoffman.
Here.
Justy Ino.
Here.
Justy Vella.
Here.
Justy Verres.
Here.
Student Justy Cordoba, absent.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the flag salute. Let's see, Dr. McQuarters, can you lead us in the flag salute?
Your mittens with gift cards? Oh, she has it.
Thank you so much. Today, we'd like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of two members of the East LA College family, Professor Melvin Brunetti and Dr. Cheryl Pittman. Professor Melvin Brunetti taught Latin American history at East LA College for over three decades and was recognized as a witty, dedicated, and caring professor. He began his career at East LA College in 1969, retiring in 2003, but remaining as an adjunct until 2007. Professor Brunetti passed away on October 26th at the age of 91. He is survived by his loving wife Estelle, daughters Renee, Karen, Alfred, Linda Wolf, and grandchildren. Dr. Cheryl Pittman was a full-time professor and program coordinator of EMT with the Administration of Justice Department at East LA College. She was hired in a tenure-track position at ELAC in 2007 and had over 16 years of full-time service. However, she also worked as an adjunct instructor for several years at ELAC before she became a full-time instructor. Dr. Pittman has served in many roles in the realm of public safety first responders. She's been a firefighter, paramedic, EMT, and an educator for decades. There are literally thousands of first responders throughout Southern California that have gone through her programs. On behalf of LA Community College District, we extend our deepest condolences to the Brunetti and Pittman families. Thank you all very much. All right, so next is the main event. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the Board of Trustees regarding the election of officers?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, let's go ahead and start it. Board members, we will now proceed to the election of officers. I declare nominations open for the position of President of the Board of Trustees.
A motion.
Okay.
Sorry, President. I'd like to nominate trustee Nishel Henderson.
I'll recognize Ms. Hernandez. Okay, and seconded by trustee Buena. All right. Okay, are there any comments about this? All right, hearing none, let's do the roll call. Oh, sorry, I'm now declaring the nomination for president closed. I apologize. You do have to close that. Okay, all right.
Justy Buena.
Yes.
Justy Henderson.
Yes.
Justy Hernandez.
Yes.
Justy Hoffman.
Yes.
Justy Ino.
Yes.
Justy Vella.
Yes.
Justy Verres.
All right, congratulations. At this time, I'm gonna hand our newly-elected president the gavel. Sit in this seat. And I will take my thug over. For now. Is it for today?
It is for today.
Now, we open the nominations for First Vice President. I declare the nominations open for the position of First Vice President of the Board of Trustees.
Motion Kelsey Ino.
Motion made by trustee Buena.
Second.
Justy Hernandez, second. Lupe, can we have a vote? I'm sorry. And now I declare the nominations for the position of First Vice President to be closed. Lupe or Crystal, can we get a roll call?
Justy Buena.
Yes.
Justy Henderson.
Yes.
Justy Hernandez.
Yes.
Justy Hoffman.
Yes.
Justy Ino.
Yes.
Justy Vella. Justy Verres.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Slide on over. Slide on over.
Now, I will entertain a motion to open the nominations for the position of Second Vice President of the Board of Trustees.
Moved.
A motion made by trustee Verres and seconded by Vice President Ino. Is that it?
You have to, you have to say we want a second vice president, and then we open nominations. Right. I thought this would be. We can do it, can we do it at the same time? Can I? Okay, can, then can I do a motion to, to have a second vice president for the year? And if I can nominate Sarah Hernandez for the position of Second Vice President?
I'll stick in that.
Thank you for that. So nominations are closed. Can we have a roll call, please?
Justy Buena.
Yes.
Justy Hernandez.
Yes.
Justy Henderson.
Yes.
Justy Hoffman.
Yes.
Justy Ino.
Double yes.
Justy Vella.
Yes.
Justy Verres.
Yes.
Now, on to item C of our agenda. The Los Angeles Community College District recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and care for it by the Tongva, Tatavium, Surrano, Kish, and Schumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work and to teach and educate on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Ferdinandino-Tatavium Band of Mission Indians, the Gabrieleno-Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, the Gabrieleno-Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, the Gabrieleno-Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, and the San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. Before we take a motion to approve the agenda and order of business, Chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda?
Now, there are no changes to the agenda, Madam President, but we would, after this item, ask for a moment of privilege to recognize our outgoing board president, Mr. David Vella, after your vote.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda and order of business?
Moved.
Thank you. Motion made by trustee Buena, seconded by trustee Verres. Roll call, please.
Justy Buena.
Yes.
Justy Henderson.
Yes.
Justy Hernandez.
Yes.
Justy Hoffman.
Yes.
Justy Ino.
Yes.
Justy Vella.
Yes.
Justy Verres.
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees. As a, as a moment to recognize Mr. David Vella for serving as board president in the year 2023, the board found it fit and suitable to recognize him with a certificate of appreciation signed by the entire member of the Board of Trustees for leading us through what has been, we believe, a remarkable, productive, and enjoyable year at LACC. Your grace, your resolve, your leadership, your trust to those members of this board and to this entire academic community of LACC is profoundly and deeply appreciated, Mr. Vella. On a personal note, we've met weekly multiple times on a variety of issues, and I appreciate it always, the sense of always supporting our North Star. Who asked me on a frequent occasion, how does this help students? How does this help our community? How does this help our board move forward? How do we exercise leadership? Challenging, provoking, supporting. So I wanted to recognize that publicly. There's a lot that goes on in this chair that Ms. Henderson knows about and will soon know a lot more about in terms of driving what is, we believe, the most dynamic and important urban community college district in this country. So today, this moment, before we move forward with the other proceedings that are also very important for today's business, we want to recognize Mr. Vella for his outstanding leadership. So everybody on the board who's in this room, please join me in thanking, recognizing, and affirming the outstanding leadership of Mr. David Vella. Thank you.
And if the board doesn't mind, President Henderson, if I would just have a whole of word. I will take two. I promise. You know, I just wanted to briefly, you know, communicate with all of you just how powerful, you know, this moment is. I really wish I could, you know, bask in all of these amazing words that the Chancellor has said, but, you know, today is monumental because, you know, we have a very strong African-American woman who is replacing me in the board as leadership. That means a lot. It means a lot to me, being probably the first openly brown LGBT person to ever have the presidency. And it is a very profound moment, Ms. Henderson, for me, to be able to give you that gavel because I know the intricacies of how you work. And I have to tell you that without Vice President Henderson and Vice President Ino, I would not be here today alive, literally, surviving last year, this year, this year still. Because of the fact that what I learned quickly is you need a very strong leadership team as you move forward. And that is because there's so many moving pieces. The district is large, it's unpredictable at times. And so you have to rely not only on the implementers, which are the Chancellor and his team and the college presidents and the faculty and the staff, but you also have to rely on the Board of Trustees themselves. And so I really would like for you guys to give a big round of applause for Vice President, former Vice President Henderson and former Vice President Ino. Thank you, thank you so much. But I just quickly want to give thanks to trustee Cordoba. She's not here right now, but she's taking an exam. That is the kind of commitment. But trustee Cordoba has, you know, and President Hoffman of the League of California can attest that because of her, she has been an amazing representative statewide. And I really want to thank her for making this year amazing. And so we really need to thank her. We're really feeling very positive as well of so many things that happened last year or this year. But I know that President Henderson will continue this, you know, momentum. We were able to really take the bull by the horns. And I want to thank our college presidents for increasing the enrollment. I live in Montebello. I saw in particular East LA Colleges' marketing, both in media and up in the streets and on the billboards and social media. And by the way, I knew that was happening at all the colleges because I did get a report of that, but more so because I, for my day job, I drive a lot around LA County. And, you know, it was just amazing to see our colleges. So thank you to all the presidents for your hard work on ensuring that enrollment continues to thrive. I also want to thank Los Angeles County. You know, this year, you know, I'm a county baby. I worked there 10 years under Supervisor Molina, who, you know, did leave her legacy. And I really do appreciate this board leadership and the Chancellor, who were on constant communication with LA County regarding foster care, regarding the ambassadors for housing, regarding our navigators, our peer navigators. So there was a lot of talk, and I think even in the realm of homelessness, we're working with the county together extremely well. And I think we had up to 10 meetings with county board supervisors last year. We had a record number of funding. I mean, I got to tell you that somewhere along, like 10 to, you know, $15 million was allocated from both state and congressional funding for our colleges. I mean, unprecedented. And I really have to, you know, Vice President Ino was Chair of Public Affairs. I was Chair of Public Affairs many, many times. So I really want to thank you for taking it by the horns and just hit the ground running. She did a fantastic job with that committee. And, you know, both trustee Hoffman and I saw her as President of the League on how amazing our advocacy efforts went on. And, you know, it is just extremely, from the Climate Center at West LA College that received an allotment to, you know, the Entrepreneurship Center at ELAC. But not only that, you know, the baccalaureate degrees that we did, you know, we did chew this year. We're going to continue to open them up. I want to thank the college presidents. The big one at Pierce College with technology was, was pretty huge. And, you know, I wouldn't really, you know, give any more credit to the fact that, you know, it was the college presidents who were pushing that forward. What's even more exciting is the increase of, you know, guaranteed admission programs that we're doing. We're celebrating Seattle University in the coming weeks. But those gap programs are extremely important. It's literally guaranteed admission programs. We brought two in this year. We'll continue to bring them in, to be honest with you. And then I think what was most surprising is when I asked, you know, trustee Hernandez to be Chair of my little weird idea of having a basic needs ad hoc committee for the whole district. And, you know, she gave it a go, and look at it now. It is unprecedented, the amount of work that is being done on basic needs. Each college is opening a basic needs center. We just opened one at Trade Tech, which was fantastic. You know, we increased the number of interim beds thanks to, you know, our foundation, to Nicolaua Lopez. And those numbers continue. And then, you know, of course, the big one, putting out an RFP for pilots. I mean, unbelievable. And then, you know, I do want to say that it took a lot of courage for trustee Hernandez to organize the Student Housing Summit at City College, first ever. Extremely powerful. We had a great, great, I think, you know, more than 100 people attended. And I want to thank all the trustees, you all attended. What a phenomenal event. And then, of course, close to my heart, and I wouldn't, you know, I took the credit for it, but the $10 million of permanent state funding that all the colleges in California community colleges will receive upwards of $100,000, even more in our district to have an LGBT center at each of the colleges. You know, when I talk about dreams, that was one of my biggest dreams, I'll be honest. When I walked in, you know, I recall being an appointee, and I was a board member. And I said, wow, you know, I really didn't think it could happen, and now it's happening. And that really is an amazing thing. And then, you know, just the increased amount of funding to Yomoja. We had our first Unity Ball that celebrated queer African-American culture, which was really important for trustee Henderson and I, which happened at Trade Tech. It was, you know, unbelievable, unprecedented. And then the big one is, you know, we got ourselves re-accreditation, you know, for the next seven years all at once, you know? And it was, I got to tell you, that was extremely gratifying because I learned a lot. You know, I didn't know I was going to get interviewed by the accreditation team so much. It seemed like an interrogation, quite frankly. But it was amazing to see all of that. And, you know, just recently, going to Mission College and opening, I mean, a phenomenal student services building. I want to thank President Ornelas for, you know, pushing that along on time, under budget. But what was amazing about it is seeing the students really go in there and be like, oh, my God, this is... First of all, they have a three-story atrium. I don't know if you guys have been. And it is just stunning. I want to thank the build team. I want to thank CFP, you know, amazing, Build LACC. Thank you, thank you so much for such a great work. You know, the other thing we did, we took a lot of political stances here. And I was really happy to see that we stood with the city of Monterey Park and, you know, denounced gun violence. That was really critical. And I know, you know, as trustees, we sometimes, you know, have to have those conversations. But that was a clear message that we have took a stand with the city of Monterey. And one, thank you, President Roman, also, for being that conduit to the city. So, and then, you know, I want to thank, you know, all of the trustees because we had a record number of graduations. You know, we had Asian Pacific graduation, we had the Mujente, we had the LGBT, the lavender, we had the African-American. And then, to top it off, we're about diversity. We had the largest industry day with the build program, thanks to Chair Verres, where we had our primes, you know, meet with small LGBT African-American firms, local, small, emerging firms, to get them in business, you know? So that was a great move. And then, of course, in a historic move, we hired a ton of new faculty. So we're really happy about that. And, you know, really happy about the fact that we were able to do, deal with negotiations in a very successful manner with a lot of respect, and I'm really happy about it. Our budget is completely balanced. Thank you, of course, Chair of our budget, trustee Hoffman, who did a fantastic job. And then, you know, at the end of the day, we really have been working hard to create an atmosphere where we're able to communicate with our constituents. And I want to thank Juliette Hidalgo as well because she's done a fantastic job as our new PIO. Let's give her a round of applause. She did a great job. And when we talk about equity, I want to thank also, of course, Dr. Regina Smith. We did a fantastic job coming in as our, yeah, our equity fellow. At first, I was like, what is that? And then I was like, oh, okay, I get it. You know, we got to, we got to have someone that will organize all of it. But look, that's the end of the speech, but it's really not the end because, as I mentioned, I can finally sleep tonight because of our new leadership team. I am so happy to see three strong women take probably first-ever all-women leadership, you know, diverse in particular, which is really important. So again, thank you to my colleagues for such an amazing year. Thank you for everybody and all their work. Thank you again. My goodness.
Now, I'll open the floor to my colleagues. Anyone that wants to give any words to a former president. Justy Hoffman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations. So what do you call it, past president? I really want to thank you for your leadership, David. You've kept it real, and you also have just an enthusiasm and a spirit about you that really kind of uplifts us even in the toughest of times, and I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that you acknowledge us all for the contributions that we made during your presidency. And I think you've done a really outstanding job. So thank you, my friend. I'm happy to be your seatmate now.
Yeah. At the end of the line, feels good.
I just want to echo those, I just want to echo those comments made by trustee Hoffman. It was a, it was a, it was great to have you as a president, trustee Vella, just as the first year of getting to know the district. It was an eye-opening experience, and it made it just much more, smoother of a transition just to have you in a leadership home. So thank you.
Am I good? Next. You know, David, I really do appreciate this past year with you. You know, you and I probably go back as long or longer than anybody else here in the room just out of coincidence and circumstances of being two kids that grew up on the east side of town. But I will say, you know, one of the challenges with being president sometimes is, is that there's a lot of work that people don't understand and recognize about collaboration, corralling, pulling together. You know, we elect you to be our spokesperson, we elect you to be our voice, we elect you to be that, that presence that embodies all of us when we're not there. And frankly, same thing when we're all there. And I've found myself through the year, and I'm going to take back to Mission College last week, it feels so good to have been president a couple of years ago, put a shovel in the ground, and then to come back two years later and to see you ribbon-cut. That's the continuity that exists in this district. But you had a yeoman's task, and every single challenge and every single, I had like full confidence that you were representing us together. And sometimes people don't realize we're all one-seventh of a piece of the leadership space here and entrusted by voters. And power is so tempting to grab and hold and corral and sometimes abuse and to feel that refreshed sense of confidence that it's representative leadership. It can be no better. And so I think I, when he first started this, I left you with this, you know, comment that by the end of the year, you've done a good job when you can't wait to get rid of it. And, and I, and I wish that on our new officers to know that it is hard work to play these roles. It's hard work to synthesize the voice and the ideas and the perspectives of all of us and to be able to vocalize it in a way that makes sense and that creates unity and hope and a positivity and a spirit to move forward. You did all that last year, and it's my open wish that Nishel can continue forward and Kelsey can continue forward and Sarah can continue forward. And we can be a place where leadership is able to reflect in such a pure way the desires and interests and the efforts of all of us. And so I have faith that it will. And sometime this time next year, that you'll love to just hand it back off and say bye like the way this guy is today. But bye, but not gone, but certainly here, and I'm going to love being here with your seatmate here. So appreciate that. Thank you, David, and then best wishes for a wonderful year for all of you.
I just want to say thank you. I think your, your leadership was exemplary. You dealt with a lot. We were quite the circus, and I think that your, the Chancellor used the word grace, and I think you really exuded a lot of that throughout this. You allowed Nishel and I to support you in this process and be our authentic selves while also having this really big vision, I think, as well in your assignments on these committees for us. And I think I'm just really grateful because you helped us execute a lot to be proud of. So just thank you and enjoy your new role as you transition out. And I hope we can be as successful, we can be as successful as you and the past presidents.
Oh, I would just like to say, working this year with trustee Vella has been amazing. I think one of the, the thread, the theme, the thread, the focus of his presidency was to unify us as a board and to be as transparent as we possibly could. And I'm really proud of him at the risk of his health a lot of times for just giving it 200% this past year because this is no joke. In this group of seven individuals, you know, I kind of affectionately refer to managing us and leading us as herding a group of cats, all kind of doing something to get to someplace and not always getting there together. But David worked really diligently to try and push us towards that place so that, as trustee Verres said, that we are executing one voice. So David, I am so grateful for your leadership. You've left big shoes to fill, and I appreciate you so much. And you will be still working, although I'll give you a little bit of a break. But we do have work we need to finish together. So I just wanted to say that I've had an opportunity, had an opportunity to get to know trustee Buena really well, working as, serving as second VP, and David serving as first VP. And it's really important to get to know people. What you think and what you assume of people is usually never correct. And so I make it a point to never assume and get to know people and get a feel for what their vision and their thoughts are. And I shared something personal with David once about an uncle of mine that I, you know, very dear to me, that was LGBT. And people ask why I'm an ally, and that is why, because of this human being that loved me so completely. But I feel like that brought David and I together. And every time I would come to David with something, he would say, okay, let's do it. So, you know, I'm hoping I can get that with Kelsey and Sarah. But, Trustee Bella, thank you so much for your leadership. And I know that, that passing this gavel was probably the thing you were thinking about last night when you went to bed. So, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that you put it in good hands. I can't trust, we'll know this time next year. But anybody else want to say something? All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
And now, moving back to our agenda, could I have a motion and a second to approve our regular board meeting and close session minutes from November 8?
I'm moved.
Okay.
Figure it out.
Okay, so motion made by Hoffman and second by Veras. Can we have a vote, please?
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you. Now for our ceremonial signing of our MOU with CSU Dominguez Hills. We'll now conduct the ceremonial signing for the MOU between LACC CD and CSU Dominguez Hills. This MOU will facilitate LACC CD students' successful enrollment, retention, and graduation at CSU DH. This MOU was approved by the Board of Trustees at the July 7th meeting, and the periods of service is from July 5th, 2023 to July 4th of 2028. So congratulations, and I will pass it off to the Chancellor for some words.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's a proud moment for us. Proud moment for us, and I can't tell you how pleased this board is, our college presidents, that we have a doctor and president, Dr. Thomas Parm with us here, the CSU president of Dominguez Hills. I met Dr. Parm when he was first was given the opportunity to serve as, as a Dominguez Hills president. I went to his inauguration, to his coronation, I don't know what we call those things. But it was a wonderful opportunity for the community and LACC City was represented to embrace this amazing individual. From day one, our congruent goals and values around equity, student access, support, building community, building capacity, empowering people, lifting people out of poverty, education as a tool for emancipation, education as a tool for liberation, through all themes. Dr. Parm and I have worked on together, both in and outside of our respective roles in community organizations, the LA Chambers of Commerce, areas of business and industry and making connections. Our pathways have consistently been congruent. So he's been a partner from day one. The July MOU that the board unanimously approved was a codification of our interest to create pathways from here to there. From LACC City's nine incredible colleges and its faculty and curriculum, students and programs to Toro Land. That's what we, it was from here to there. And so it's a five-year MOU. And it's not just a traditional transfer agreement that we have with the CSU in general. But there's a lot of additional elements to the MOU that this has. This was in part solidified when our nine college presidents went to visit Dr. Parm and his team. And we sat down, broke bread, and talked about how we could build capacity to serve the LA region. Again, to promote this idea of education as a tool, education as a liberator, education as a way to indeed lift our communities. And it was immediate congruence of values and immediate cooperation. We have a data sharing interest in this particular way. For students that, for whatever reasons, don't get into Dominguez Hills right away as transfer students or as, as first-time freshmen or as persons rejoining as adult learners, there's an opportunity at any one of our LACC City colleges to identify those students, support those students, and get them back on the pathway to Toro Land. That's the kind of direct influential and data sharing that we will have, the direct pathway. Most of our students are placebound. They're not moving out of the area. They want to live, be educated, and contribute towards their local communities. They want to bolster the local regional economy, and they're for students who look very much like us, like the people in this room. We have many, let me just ask, how many have Dominguez Hills degrees under your belt? Anybody here? Look at this. Look at this. Look at this. Dr. Parm, we'd like to invite you forward to say a few words. I know you have several members of your team who are here. You're welcome to introduce them, and then we'll get on with the ceremonial signing as a compact towards our trust and our interest and our mutual cooperation to ensure that students have multiple pathways for higher education. So, Dr. Parm, welcome to LACC CD.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Rodriguez. Let me say to the members of the board, good afternoon. To our college presidents, who I have met and worked with, good afternoon. To members of the Chancellor's staff and the Community College District, good afternoon. And to our members of the public who have joined us. I am Dr. Thomas Parm, your president of California State University Dominguez Hills. I am joined by a fabulous array of team members who work with me. And I, I start off by introducing them today. Even as we talk about this agreement, that I'm so proud to, to stand up and partner with my colleague and friend. I introduce them because, as a leader, we recognize that we are only as good as the work produced by the people who work with and for us. And so I am surrounded by a group of folk who work tirelessly on behalf of the institution but to help transform lives. And that is the glue, if you will, that connects us all as systems that now come together. So let me invite members of my team, if you would, please stand. This is a family affair, if you will.
Oh, wow.
So what happens if you give a party and everybody wants to come? This is the family that I work with. Ladies and gentlemen, this is my team at California State University Dominguez Hills. Let me also say in just a brief couple moments that I bring you greetings from the university, from our distinguished faculty, from our staff, from our students. Also want to provide greetings to you from the California State University system. We remain proudly so, the largest system of public higher education in all of America. We take a backseat to nobody on that one. But we do so not simply because of the numbers of the demographics, but because of the mission. And the mission couldn't be more clear. It couldn't be more crystallized in how we are providing excellence in academics and research. We're providing access to the states and the region's citizens. And we are providing one of the most affordable educations in this nation in the CSU. And so on behalf of our brand-new Chancellor, Dr. Mildred Garcia, who took over the helm of our distinguished system on October 1st, we bring you greetings because the sentiments that we express today and the partnership we have between the LA Community College District and California State University Dominguez Hills are sentiments that are shared down in Golden Shore at the Chancellor's office of the California State University system. And I remind us today on this December board meeting in 1923, as we prepare to close the year out, we started 2023 with the recognition that 160 years ago this country signed the Emancipation Proclamation. And in trying to eliminate and guarantee freedom for segments of the citizenry that were not afforded those freedoms, there still remained a profound incongruence between what the document was celebrated for and what it actually delivered. It challenges us 160 years later to recognize that there are still promises unfulfilled, lives yet to be transformed, and a workforce yet to be populated by those individuals that we will teach and train in our institutions individually and collectively. But I'm reminded as well that even as we have been blessed to inherit the legacy of the ancestors who have allowed us to arrive at this space and time, there remain what I call the, the rocks of resignation and the stones of stagnation that litter the pathway of opportunity for our students. Our job in our community college systems and in our state universities, and even in our research universities, is to clear the pathway so that our students have unparalleled access to education. Why Brother Malcolm was clear when he reminded us that education is that passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for today. It is true that one of the other elements that we share in common are the demographics of our students. And what you know about California State University Dominguez Hills is very representative of the students in the Los Angeles Community College District. On our campus today, we have 89% students of color. I didn't stutter, 89%. A good 60% who are first generation. 70% of our students Pell-eligible. 60% of that cohort with an EFC, the Expected Family Contribution of Zero, which tells you how economically challenged they are. And we still take in a number of students who, despite being eligible for admission, are still less than prepared to manage the rigors of a university curriculum. We know that, yes?
Yeah.
That is our challenge. And while they come from interesting circumstance, I remind us all today in this auditorium that our students come from circumstance, but they are not their circumstance. They may come from poverty, but their spirits are still rich. They may come from violent surroundings, but still have a peaceful heart. But they come with the capacity to learn. They come with the capacity to grow. They come with the capacity to thrive if only we give them an opportunity. So why am I so excited about this partnership? Because there are so many places in this nation where students arrive on a university campus but somehow can't see themselves reflected within the fabric of those institutions based on the demographics that they represent. When you send your students to us and facilitate that transfer, know that they will come into an environment that is rich in its cultural diversity. That is oozing, right, with the salt, so that they become these saltwater fish in freshwater worlds that allow us just to kind of shake a little salt in their lives and allow them to feel empowered. Know that when they come into the spaces that are the California State University Dominguez Hills, as we are standing up new curriculum and enhanced faculty and marvelous co-curricular experience, know that we are prepared to receive them and nurture and help them grow and develop. Because we recognize, much like you do, and much like everybody should in this region, in this city, and in this nation, that because our students come from circumstance, they are not their circumstance. I believe that each of our young people is a seed of divinely inspired possibility. And if we can nurture them in the proper context, they will grow into the fullest expression of all they are supposed to become. Our institution, your California State University Dominguez Hills, is that soil into which your divine seeds of possibility that you pass on to us will be placed. And we will water with the drops of intellectual nourishment. We will enrich them with those drops and the nutrients, the miracle growth, if you will, that allow them to keep on moving forward. We will take the tools until the soil will take the weeds of social distraction out of their life to the degree that we can. And then we will provide them with just enough sunlight of affirmation to make them feel good, but also let them know they belong. Lots of our students don't even know they belong in college. We will let them know they belong in those spaces. And then we will provide them also with just enough shade of critique. So when they get out of line, we will tell them, straighten up and get back in line, because you got a mission. And then we will just stand back and watch them grow into the fullest expression of all they are supposed to become. That is what we are guaranteeing you with this partnership that we will sign today. So know that there are more than words on that page. This is a commitment where we are being entrusted by this community to be able to provide students with an educational experience that we are so proud of at California State University Dominguez Hills. We want you to know, we want you to trust, we want you to believe that we will nurture the souls that you pass on to us. The only thing we ask is that you pass on a few more than we are. Right now, we looked at the data last time we met, yes? In somewhere between high 80 to 90% of the students who apply are admitted into our spaces. So that number we were looking at about how many haven't quite made it, but will provide a pathway forward, is relatively small. I have been very clear, didn't stutter, nor did I blink. In writings that I have done nationally that said, we will not judge our worth as an educational institution by our selectivity ratios, by helping ourselves feel good because we only took the top three or four or five or 10% of folk. I want everybody, because I think there's talent that is rich in all of them. It just remains more latent than visible. Our job is to be that, that, that thinner, that turpentine, if you will, that rubs off the rust, that takes away that image that they've been painted with by society and reveal the masterpiece that is the students that we will educate and train. When we sign this agreement today, that is what we are embracing. And we thank you for partnering with us and getting all this work. With that, I'll stop and say it has been our pleasure. Thank you so much for having us.
I want to invite, if you would, my Dominguez Hills team, this is a passion that would come forward.
Great.
Now they all want to be silent.
Yeah.
Come on, y'all. Chris and Milo, Vera and Kennedy, will you?
Don't be shy, don't be shy.
I know we did this last month.
last month. We did prior.
Well. If you like, basically some of the same advice too, but if you've done your, uh, fellow, I think it makes sense to go medications, but let's see what happens. You know it. All right, I've been on for years. I mean, I've left today. Yeah, he's, thank you. That's scary. Fifty-five, yeah, really young, like his kids were three after full college.
Do we have any members of the public that are signed up to address the board on the twenty twenty-three, twenty-six master benefits agreement between the LACC D and the JL MBC?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, so may I have a motion and a second on item F two, which is to approve the master agreement?
Oh, moved. Second.
So motion made by VP Ino and second by VP Hernandez. Uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Justice Bula.
Yes.
Justice Henderson.
Yes.
Justice Hernandez.
Yes.
Justice Hoffman.
Yes.
Justice Ino.
Yes.
Justice Vela.
Yes.
Justice Vares.
Yes.
The Los Angeles Community College District and the Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee have reached a three-year successor master benefits agreement from July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Congratulations. We will now conduct the ceremonial signing on the master benefits agreement.
Now, we can have, uh, Bill Ellison, who's our chair of the committee, come on up.
Yeah. Yeah, what about your pinhole?
Actually, I, I would like to say a couple of things. Just more of a personal note, I had my own, uh, health issues that I had to deal with this September, October, and most of November. Um, and absolutely can't imagine what life would be like without having good medical benefits and our we do have a very rich salary and benefits package in this district and I am immensely thankful for it because I, it I, I can't imagine what happens to folks that don't have coverage. It re, it recommits me uh, on our part-time healthcare that we've worked on this year and are, are implementing as we speak. And probably the need at some point in this country to get to a universal healthcare system of some sort because honestly, if you don't have the insurance, I, if you had what I had, I think you'd just die. Uh, and it's really, um, it connected home with me. So, um, I'm glad that we were able to come to an agreement. It was a very uh, tough year. Uh, we haven't seen double-digit increases in premiums in probably more than a decade. Uh, and yet, uh, the district was very committed with us all into maintaining, um, the coverages and we didn't lose any coverages. Um, and we managed to gain, uh, the part-time healthcare and the funding from this day and it's all come together. And so we didn't slide any farther and we made a little progress. And in the year with double-digit increases, I think that's pretty impressive. So in this case, it was a teamwork of all of the unions and management i- in this agreement. Just anywhere?
Hey. Now, do we have any members of the resource table who wish to be recognized at this time to make comments before the board?
Good afternoon. Congratulations, President Henderson and Vice President Ino and Hernandez. Um, so I want to start out by paraphrasing Martin Luther King nineteen sixty-three. He said that the ultimate measure of a leader is not where they stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy. So as we all know, two months ago, the Los Angeles Times published a story detailing the district's handling of several sexual harassment and discrimination place cases at Southwest College. Um, I actually have the print version right here. It came out on November twenty-seventh. If you haven't seen it. Um, and as you know, uh, last year, one of these complaints resulted in a ten million dollar jury verdict against the district and a former administrator. The district's handling of these cases, including the decision to pay thousands of dollars for the legal representation of said administrator and the failure to protect students and employees have come under heavy criticism. Since then, additional concerns about public corruption, including irregularities in procurement and the awarding of large public contracts have surfaced and have been communicated in writing to the trustees. The district leadership has yet to respond publicly to the LA Times story or any of these matters. The District Academic Senate Executive Committee met on December first and unanimously passed a resolution requesting two actions by the board. The first action is for an independent audit, external audit due to the financial and procurement irregularities. And the second is to take effective action to combat sexual harassment and discrimination. I want to thank the many individuals who have joined their voices to our concerns, including the faculty at Southwest College, members of the community, the statewide academic senate, and our unions, including AFT fifteen twenty-one A and SEIU Local ninety-nine. We're supporting this resolution and increasing awareness of these issues. I also want to take, think, take a moment to thank several of the trustees for having very candid private conversations with me about these matters. During one of these conversations, I was asked, why are you focusing on these issues instead of talking about the wonderful things that we do for our students? So there are several ways I can answer that question. First of all, I do read the LA Times and I have to say that this is not the best recruitment enrollment coverage that we want for our district. From a, from a pragmatic standpoint, not addressing these issues have cost us millions of dollars. Most importantly, we have a moral legal obligation to take action to end a culture of silence when we are made aware of abuse, bullying, corruption, discrimination, and harassment. And then finally, I'd say that we are elected as leaders. We're not elected to be cheerleaders. And there is an important difference between a leader and a cheerleader. And I think this district needs more leadership in this area. Last month, I talked a little bit about the effects of sexual harassment and discrimination. Today, I want to talk about corruption. Corruption is a cancer. It spreads and it weakens and it ultimately destroys an organization. It's not a victimless crime. It preys on those who are least able to protect and defend themselves. When resources that are meant for classes, facilities, student services are misspent, it is the poor, the disabled, students and adjunct faculty who suffer the most through class cuts, lack of services, substandard buildings, and broken elevators. Corruption is a betrayal of the very principles of social justice and it erodes the trust between the board and its constituents. Combating public corruption requires a united front from all stakeholders, demanding transparency and accountability from elected officials and public servants. Trust is fragile. As board members, you are entrusted to uphold the highest ethical standards, demonstrate integrity, transparency, honesty, and accountability, and to protect your constituents, students, faculty members, and the public funds. The district's whistleblower protection and sexual harassment policies must be reviewed, strengthened, and enforced. We must provide a safe avenue and resolution for those who witness corruption or experience harassment so they can come forward without fear of reprisal or retaliation. They are entitled to timely, fair, and impartial resolution and investigations. It is our collective responsibility to create an environment where corruption, harassment, and discrimination cannot thrive. Recognizing mistakes takes a degree of self-awareness and humility. Takes courage to look in the mirror and admit when we have faltered. And I would argue that we owe Dr. Sabrina Turner Odom, Erica Miller Tate, and others an apology. And I have apologized to them. And we also owe them a sincere commitment to make sure that something like this never happens again. The District Academic Senate will meet tomorrow at Los Angeles Pierce College at one thirty PM. I want to publicly extend an invitation to the trustees and the chancellor to attend the meeting. And I will email you the Zoom information. Uh, we, we will continue to discuss this resolution and we look forward to productive progress in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ivana Campos and I am the requiring Secretary and Lead Negotiator for AFT College Staff Field Local fifteen twenty-one A. Congratulations, President Henderson, First VP Ino, and Second VP Hernandez. Thank you to Trustee Vela for your support and leadership this past year. I want to take this time to wish you all happy holidays and to let you know that there is chocolate outside. So hopefully you'll end this meeting in a sweet note. And I look forward to continuing our work in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Chrissana Ozan, representing SEIU Local ninety-nine. I want to say congra- congratulations to President Henderson, uh, Vice, Vice President Ino and Hernandez. Um, before I get started, I want to extend my condolences to the family of Sergio De La Torre and Benny Flores. They both worked at ELAC over a little over ten years as custodians and both recently passed away. And I want to extend my thoughts and prayers out to their families. Um, also, I want to take this moment to, to address the chancellor's email that was sent district-wide on his commitment to harassment-free environment la- last week. Frankly, it's a little too late for this. The damage has al- already been done. A ten million dollar sexual harassment settlement paid for by taxpayers is incomprehensible. And the fact that the person was allowed to interview for the same position is disturbing. The question is, how many other harassment cases have been paid out as lawsuit settlement? Have any of these individuals, um, have any of these individuals responsible been subjected to disciplinary, disciplinary action and how many are still working for the dis- the district? The chancellor's email is not going to undo the pain and suffering that people across the district had to endure from being harassed on the job. Furthermore, you can have a million policies in place for harassment, but no one, but if no one is enforcing these policies acro- across the board and holding people accountable for their actions, then the district policies are useless and hold no merit. Our members have submitted complaints to the district on harassment multiple times over the years and they went nowhere. Nothing happens with the complaints and the harassment continues. We need policies that will have repercussion for harassment, repercussion for harassment in the workplace when it comes to misconduct and unprofessional behavior. The district has been historically known to bend the rules for management and administration. Our members are constantly raising concerns of harassment in the workplace and have been ignored by this district and this board and treated with the harshest punishment possible for the smallest infract- infraction where presidents, upper management administrators suffer no consequences for more serious negative behavior and get moved, get moved around the district. And that's not right. All of you on this board have a fiduciary responsibility, which is to oversee the operations of the organi- organization, ensure that the public trust is upheld, address the community needs, and that practices are ethical and legal and so forth. We don't see that we're being protected by this board. It is, is, it was very disappointing to hear that this board still voted to have our members suspended, uh, for her attendance last month after she spoke on how she was being harassed on the job. And it's upsetting that we don't have a policy for bullying and harassment in place. Everyone that came to Local ninety-nine for support made a commitment to our members that you will stand and address the bullying, um, and bullying and harassment in a district. So far, none, none of you have done that. And we are, we are tired of, of not being heard. We are tired of the harassment. We are tired of dealing with the harassment issues on campus such as with Trade Tech, which I keep bringing up, uh, West LA implant facilities. And we are tired of the lack of professional, uh, uh, leadership on some campuses. We are tired of the, uh, lack of accountability, double standard in this district. And we are ta- tired of the lack of regard for our members. We need things to change and we need this done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ozan. Anyone else?
First, I want to thank, um, President Parham for his inspirational words. Uh, you know, I found of being president of the union, you don't gain a voice, you actually lose your voice, you know, uh, you represent a whole constituency group and sometimes that means you can't say exactly what you feel, how you feel, and when you feel it. And I've learned to try to navigate that. I also want to take a mo- but hearing his words, it, it just really made me focus in on what we're all here for, you know, and for these most vulnerable populations in all of Los Angeles. And working the LA County Probation Department before, I became a probation officer because I wanted to keep kids out of the system because my brothers and sisters had all been members of the system, you know? And I was lucky enough to escape the system. And, you know, the system's a big portion of the problem. But being here and working in the position that we're in today, we actually get a chance to make a difference in people's lives that will keep future generations out of the system. And that's an important thing. I want to take a moment to congratulate, give congratulations to trustee Henderson on your presidency, trustee Eno, and trustee Hernandez. I also want to thank David Bell. I want to thank you for your leadership, your support of AFT 1521. I also want to thank you for standing up and, you know, being out and supportive of the LGBTQIA community. That's difficult, and I have two children who are queer, and seeing leadership like yours is going to be important to them. So, thank you. I also want to thank Bill Ellington Sealy for his work on this master benefits agreement. What Bill said about not having insurance is something that my family went through for a long period of time. And three of my brothers passed away before the age of 50, one by the age of 36, all because they didn't have health insurance, two cancer, and one from a stroke. And so this kind of thing is important, and Bill's right. We need healthcare for the rest of the state of California, the rest of the people in the country, the world, period. But today, what I wanted to talk about was trust, right? And we need to learn to trust each other, right? And we don't. I'm going to be honest. We absolutely don't. I'm tired of lying. We even have trust issues within our own union. So this is not something that's just between us and administration. This is something that permeated through this entire district. I understand why we don't. We have a lack of understanding of each other's viewpoints. We don't really listen, and we don't really trust what the other person's saying. We think that there's this underlying issue that we're not really talking about that's really at the core, instead of what's being said might be the actual issue that we want to address. We need to learn to really actively listen to each other. And empathy is a powerful tool. We need to be empathetic towards each other, and that means also towards us, administration. Understand what you all are trying to do. See that you are rational actors and that your biggest concerns are things like the budget and get that. But understand, when we speak for our faculty, our biggest concern is making sure our faculty get paid adequately so they can do their jobs and do their jobs without having to take too much away from their families and their home lives and that they're too tired to actually do their jobs well. There's also a fear of transparency in this district. And what I mean is, sometimes we can't handle the truth, and you're afraid to tell it to us because you're like, oh, no, they can't take that, right? We have to do better on that, too. There's also a history of unions and management being adversarial in the United States. But I suggest that we stop seeing it that way. The European model of unions is that unions are the best way to effectively manage the workforce. That when you get the workforce, the people who actually do the work involved in the decision-making, what ends up happening is it's transformative, and they're more productive. And that's the way we need to see it, that it's an actual partnership. There's also a lack of patience and sometimes a lack of follow-through, right? If we ask you to, when something's going to get done, and you give us a timeline, please adhere to that timeline. If you can't adhere to that timeline, tell us why and what wins the new timeline. We also get conflicting messages. You get conflicting messages from us, I'm going to be honest, right? That sometimes you'll have certain people from certain campuses calling you and telling you this is what the union position is, while I'll tell you another union position as well. Right? We have to stop that on our side. People can call you, as any union member can call you, but if they represent AFT 1521, it has to be a unified message, right? And we have to work on that. But also, we get conflicting messages from administration, too, quite honestly, right? We get people from campus presidents to VPs pointing to the top, and then we get the top pointing back to the bottom, oh, no, that was a local decision, right? I don't really care who made the decision. I just want it fixed, quite honestly, right? And something, there's a history of demonization in this guild, too. I don't see you all as horrible people. I see mistakes made, absolutely. But I told you something that I will share publicly for each one of you, and I've told it to some of your press campus presidents as well. I will never stab you in the back. That's not who the hell I am. But I sure will stab you in the chest, and I will let you know it's coming and give you time to fix it. So I'm not going to blame you for things that are not your fault, right? But I will blame you for the things that are, but I'll let you know it's coming. I will show you that much respect. I expect as much of that respect in return. But how do we build trust is really the question. First, I ask you to support the DAS resolution. See it as an opportunity to improve. Not a political move, not political posturing, but an opportunity to actually improve. Sexual harassment is not just a problem for the district. Sexual harassment is a problem that's endemic to the United States and to most of the rest of the world where patriarchy exists. Let's be the leader in doing something about sexual harassment. And guess what? You're not going to end it. But you know what? You can be more responsive to it. And then that will solve a lot of the problems. Be more, let's be more generous with each other. Let's believe that the decisions made were made with good intentions. And let's believe that the asks that the unions have for you are asks that are genuinely beneficial to their members and are needed in order for us to do our jobs better. Let's become actual partners. You can't be successful without the workers. No business can. The workers run the company. As I always say to people when they say, hey, I hate that professional athletes make so much money. I always tell them, well, what do you want to do if they make less? They're still going to charge you the same ticket prices, and then the owner makes more. But what did the owner do for the profit? Nothing. It's the ballplayer did, just like the Starbucks worker is the one who made the profit. He made your coffee. When's the last time you saw the owner? We're nothing without the workers. We're also nothing without a good management team. So we need you to do your jobs as well. I say this because what's at stake is our community's futures. And I don't say that lightly, and that's why I thank Dr. Parham for what he's saying. Because what we do is extremely important. It's extremely vital for our communities. It is the lifeblood for low-income communities. It gives hope and opportunity to people that don't have hope and opportunity. Our campuses, as is, are at stake. We're going to be entering Hold Harmless soon. End of Hold Harmless soon, excuse me. When that happens, if we don't work together, this district could look vastly different than it looks now. And no offense to anyone in this room or even anyone in my guild. But I'm more concerned with what that means to the people in the community than it even means to us. Because we'll probably be okay. But will they? Will our adjuncts, who this is their income and livelihood, will they be okay? Me as a full-time faculty, I'll probably be all right. For our students and for the future generations, what does this mean? What does it mean for those students trying to go to Cal State Dominguez Hills if we don't exist the way we exist? Also, please, stop referring to it as class cuts. I say this to all the presidents. Stop referring to it as class cuts. It is job reduction. It is pay reductions. It is layoffs. Whether you want to call it officially a layoff or not, it doesn't matter. A person lost their job and may not be able to pay their rent, may not be able to pay their mortgage. That's what it is, and that's why we fight. We know hard decisions are going to have to be made, but let's make them together. Let's be true partners. Let's work together to make the right decisions, to make sure our students have all the classes they need, to do as little damage to our faculty and our staff as possible. In fact, maybe together, we don't have to do any damage at all. Maybe together, we can actually make the district even more healthy. We've actually done a better job than other places in Los Angeles when it comes to enrollments. Ask my wife who works at Santa Monica, the supposed jewel of the California system. They're struggling far more than we are. One of the steps we're going to do in this that measures, we're going to be more proactive than Sacramento, and I want you to join us in that. I want us all the bargaining units to join us in that. We need to go to Sacramento together on issues that we have a common interest in, management and the union. Because we have a governor who is getting ready to run for president, and he is going to care about that budget. And if he decides to cut the education budget, we will be at the top of those cuts. We have to let them know that that is not acceptable. And with that, we'll be bringing back the march in March for our community colleges. March 7, we will be going up to Sacramento with as many students and community colleges as possible in the state of California, as well as the CSUs, fighting for our students' futures. Please join us in that fight. And the last thing I'm going to say is all of us, management and the unions alike, need to stop fiddling while Rome burns to the frickin' ground. And what I mean by that is no more self-inflicted wounds. These issues that we have, let's fix them, and let's move forward. We need to end this lack of solidarity, and we need to think that what's online is our students' futures, and it's unacceptable for me to sacrifice them for any political or personal motives. So let's fix it, and let's do this together. Thank you.
Anyone else from the resource table? We've heard the chancellor's, we've received the chancellor's monthly report, which includes activities at the colleges from the college presidents. Do any of the presidents wish to further comment or add anything not included?
We have Donna May from the resource table, too. She's on Zoom. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Doctor B. In the wave, but go ahead.
Thank you. First, congratulations to the newly-elected board president and vice presidents. Teamsters wishes everyone a happy, healthy holiday season. We also want to remind everyone how privileged we are to work in the field that we do, where we get to support the students that we do. I want to recognize and thank our members for their hard work this year and to enjoy a well-deserved break during the holiday season. Thank you for your continued support. Rest, relax, breathe. And next year, I welcome Dr. Deborah Harrington back as our Teamsters president. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor B. In the wave. Is there anyone else? So, college presidents, feel free to step to the podium and share all of your good news at your conference.
Let me first say, trustee Vela, thank you for your advocacy on behalf of Southwest College. I don't know if moving to one seed means retirement, but we really appreciate all that you've done. Certainly, congratulations to trustee Henderson for your election as president and to our first vice president trustee Eno and our second vice president trustee Hernandez. Thank you. And to the Board of Trustees, thank all of you. I just want to quickly give a quick highlight. On December 3, close to 3,000 members of our community converged on Los Angeles Southwest College in partnership with the Calvin Broadus Jr., some of you know him as Snoop Dogg, brought together the Snoop Youth Football League, 3,000 participants. It was a wonderful event. Southwest College looks forward to their continual partnership with them as they plan for their Super Bowl in this coming January. We also want to highlight, along with that, the importance of athletics. What we see is a coming together of a community. It's not just about the prowess of the skill sets that the students bring, but it is about a collective experience that brings the community together. And so I want to highlight, as I close, 70 or so young men of color reengaged Southwest College, remained academically eligible, delivered a winning football season after 20 years to Southwest College, led by Margie Miller, who this year has been acknowledged as Coach of the Year for the American Pacific League. This is something that happened in one semester. One semester. Each one of these students that came together at Southwest College, full-time students, we would look at it as an FTE. I look at it more than that. I look at men of color coming together from a community, re-engaging Southwest College, looking for something better than the community has to offer. These young men performed not only on the field, in the classroom, but also in the community itself as they went out to K through 12 campuses and served in various community events, Toys for Tots, showing how important it is for them to give back as they continue to move forward in their own careers. Making this significant impression on these potential Cougar Cubs shows the brand, shows the tenacity. It shows the excellence of our faculty, of our classified, and of our administration at Southwest College. I want to thank all of you, the administration, the classified, and the faculty for the work that you've done to show how important Southwest College is to this community. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Before you leave, President Bella, thank you so much for your amazing leadership as board president. I think you're going to hear from many of us, but please, I didn't mean to have you come back. Trustee Henderson, congratulations on being our board president, African-American woman. What an amazing day for us it is in history here at LACC D. Of course, Vice President Eno, congratulations. Second Vice President Hernandez, congratulations as well. Let me talk a little bit about the basic needs. That's been a topic of conversation for a while for us. And I just want to share with you again, similar to Trade Tech, ELAC opened their Basic Needs Center two weeks ago. And it's an amazing, amazing hub for our students to be able to get a lot of the basic support that many of us take for granted, but the reality is that many of our students do not have. We have a partnership with LA Food Bank that is ongoing. They come twice a month on campus, both Southgate and Monterey Park, to distribute food to students. We have a line of about 350 students, and all of the food is pretty much distributed. So it shows you need there. On Monday, we're hosting an event, and I understand President Henderson will be there with us. Supervisor Han will be there at the Southgate campus to donate $20,000 to ELAC to go towards basic needs. So again, we're excited about that. Last week, we also held a couple of enrollment events, both Southgate and Monterey campuses. In total, we had over 1,000 students who showed up to get on-the-spot registration support and student support services. In addition, on the weekend, we had a dual enrollment event where we had about 143 students also come on campus and get support for dual enrollment. Staying on that trend of dual enrollment, many of you know, we have a pilot program with the state chancellor's office to begin classes for ninth graders at our schools. And I'm happy to report that between Alhambra High School and Southgate High School, we had over 750 enrollments. That is, 750 ninth graders actually took a dual enrollment class. So that is something that we're very proud of. The goal is 1,000, and I think we're going to far surpass 1,000 by the end of the year. Our Center for Entrepreneurship and Innovation will be opening mid-spring to the end. We're excited about that. That's going to give us an opportunity to have industry and business partners onsite. The goal is, as students finish their certificates and degrees, they'll have an opportunity to actually gain a successful job. Having the partners onsite will be critical, and of course, the incubator, which will be an important part of our degrees as we're teaching our students how to become small business entrepreneurs. We know the area, particularly the area that we serve, was hit hard during the pandemic. A lot of small businesses closed, particularly businesses owned by minorities and women. And so that's our focus. That's our target with the new center, and we're looking forward to making sure that we continue to develop on that end. Finally, just wishing all of you and your families a wonderful holiday season and looking forward to a very successful 2024. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Board President Henderson, and Eno, and Hernandez. I wanted to share two events that happened at Trade Tech. The first took place on Monday. We had a barber battle. It was our first one. We actually had over 30 barbering students compete. It was in six categories, everything from fastest fade to best beard style. Also, last Friday, we had our Design and Media Arts Pathway did their Fall Go Thimbo Fashion Show. This year's theme was Immortal Fashionistas. It was a hominich of legendary fashion designers. So actually, had fashion design students, you know, designed the different designs, cosmetology, did the hair, coordinator did the food, media did the production. So it was a great opportunity. So I just want to thank the students and classified professional and faculty. So it was a great opportunity. So I just want to thank the students and classified professional and faculty that are all part of that, those two events to make it happen. And then lastly, this past Monday, um, Trade Tech was a special, had a special visit from the United States Agency of International Development. Um, and included the counselor, Mr. Clinton White. Um, it was a rich and productive time. It was a great conversation among the, the, the colleges as well. So thank you.
Well, good afternoon. Uh, congratulations, President Henderson, Vice Presidents Hernandez and Eno. You know, I'll get it right. And in abstention, thank you, David. I'm going to take a little bit different tact in the, in the minute and a half that I have with you all and talk about what a great year West has had. So I'm going to give you a quick retrospective. This past year, West was named an Aspen Top 150 Institution. We attained our second bachelor's degree. Our accreditation commendation came because we exhibited a campus-wide sense of collegiality and working for students. We opened with your support, the California Center for Climate Change Education. And we did it. Our first event brought in over 700 people from across the state and the community. Our foundation held its first gala in 13 years, is back, and it was a sellout event. We were the first college in the district to do a four-credit in-language program in child development. And just within the last couple of weeks, we've been awarded a $600,000 zero textbook cost grant to develop zero textbook cost programs or textbooks in climate change, food science and bioscience. And we were just named the MAP College of the Year, the Mapping Articulated Pathways. So we could not have done that without the support of the and the activities of the folks on campus, our leadership, our faculty, our staff, and with you all, because you have supported West and celebrated us all along the way, and we really appreciate it. So from everybody at West, all of you, best for the holidays.
Good afternoon and congratulations, President Henderson and Vice President Eno and Vice President Hernandez. Great. Have you ladies be part of the great team here at LACC D. And of course, thank you to um, past President Vela. Um, and I want to take um, the moment to thank uh, President Henderson. She will be joining uh, Pierce's um, grand opening of our agricultural program, uh, agricultural building tomorrow. Um, we've been having a lot of celebrations at Pierce's. Our faculty have been hard at work celebrating plays, music. Uh, we had a high school choir come and sing a couple of nights ago. I mean, it's just been full of activities all over uh, the campus. Um, our enrollment is doing great. The college is thrilled. We are really close. We're 7% away. We got three weeks to go and 7% gap from 2017. So uh, we're, we're catching up. Um, on a sad note, um, we lost our, our cheer coach, Sac Harris. I would have shared this sooner with the board. However, it just happened on Thursday. We needed to respect his family. Um, he died unexpectedly uh, on Thursday night. Um, he served as our cheer, our cheer team uh, coach for 10 years. Uh, the college has dedicated one of the trophy cases in the lobby of the North Gym on his on, on, into his, in memory of him. And um, a vigil was held at LA Pierce with friends, family and his husband on December 11. Pierce is heartbroken. So we really need your prayers. Our, our cheer team is just devastated. So please uh, send uh, prayers our way for our, our student athletes and our cheer team. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, first of all, congratulations, President Henderson. So excited for you today. Um, and also congratulations to trustee Eno and trustee Hernandez. Um, looking forward to continuing to work with the board and uh, you know, supporting our students moving forward. So we have some exciting news at LA City College. Um, LACC Ralph Bunch Scholar Dylan Martinez received a Transfers Alliance TAP Scholarship for next year from UCLA with the amount of $5,000 annually. So congratulations to one of our stellar students. In addition to that, on December 4th, the LA Rams recognized ASG Executive of Clubs Natalie Goodlife as LA Rams Playmaker for her community service and support um, for her work with the LACC's uh, Cubby's Closet. She is the 23rd Playmaker Selected and will be featured as a guest at the December 17th's LA Rams game. So she is super excited about that. And in her honor, they have donated $5,000 to Cubby's Closet. And their partner, uh, PacSun has donated $51,000 in closing to our Cubby's Closet, which is exciting for our students and our community as they look for additional resources that we want to support. And also yesterday, I received, or we received at LA City College, $67,000 donation to the Break It To Make It Program, supporting our incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals to successfully um, reintegrate into their communities. So we are excited to get that support from the Sterling Foundation. So a lot of good things happening. Just excited to be here and be part of this family as I finish my fourth month on the job. So thank you.
Chair Henderson, can I make a comment? Is that okay? Um, Dr. Gabru. Thank you for that great report. I just want to say that, you know, you find out the best things on Facebook. And I saw that you held an award ceremony called the You Matter Here Award. And I just wanted to commend you for that. I think that's very apropos. I know that Chancellor for many years, that was, that's our slogan, like you matter here. So thank you so much for doing that. I think, I think your awardee is also in the room, but I don't want to embarrass him.
And, and I'm so sorry. We had our annual holiday lunch this year where they did a phenomenal job putting the event together and we gave out several awards. But I gotta say, I keep talking about the You Matter slogan, really embodies who we are, what we do. But one of our vice presidents, my vice president, Alan Andressi, received the award from the faculty and staff. So congrats to my vice president, Alan. I, I, yeah, I thought he was on campus. I apologize, Alan.
Thank you.
Alan, did you wear Nikes today again? Good, good afternoon and good, good evening. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to uh, trustee Vela for yesterday. He attended our uh, ceremony of the top of the beam for our Southeast Hall. You know, it's going to house our nursing program. It's going to house our student equity programs, our Veterans Resource Center, and also our DSPS Student Center. So we're excited about it. It's scheduled to open fall 2025. So please put that on your calendars because uh, fall 2025, it's just around the corner and we're excited. Also want to say congratulations to Madam President Henderson, Madam Vice President Eno and Madam Vice President Hernandez. Woo, that's going to sound really good. I'm just saying. So I want to say congratulations to every one of you. I look forward to your leadership and to everything that this year has in store for us. And I know it's going to be very energetic. So Harbor College is ready. So just want to let you know, put a few more dates on the save the date and we'll send you this information. Next year, we'll be celebrating 75 years of educating the heart of the community in the South Bay. So we have scheduled our gala for October 10th. So it's 10, 10, 24. So you can hear, so you could, it'll be easy to remember. 10, 10, 24, and we'll give you guys the particulars. So uh, be on the lookout and we continue to do all our events in regards to opening up and access for our students. On January 20th, we're going to have our Super Saturday uh, registration event for our students for the spring. And then on Saturday, uh, January 27th, we are hosting the Cash for College at Harbor College. So we are going to have LAUSD South on our campus. We're going to assist the students to apply for financial aid. And not only that, we're going to help them register for classes at Harbor College. Thank you and have a good.
I feel like I'm going to repeat everything President Girato just said. Congratulations, Board President Henderson, Vice President Eno and Vice President Hernandez. We're looking forward to your leadership and working with you with a terrific year this year. We're having our 75th anniversary next year. I promised you it's the exact same report. Super Saturday, uh, but two, two new, two unique things, uh, just to invite you to. Tomorrow, 4 o'clock, we have our nursing pending in Monarch Call. If you've never been to a nursing pending and you're free, please come by. It's an amazing ceremony. And on Friday, we have our Care for Kids event where we're donating and giving presents out to the kids of our CARE um, Next Up and Guardian programs. So if you're free Friday at 2:30, also in Monarch Call, please come by. It's an absolutely wonderful event. Thank you.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to congratulate uh, President Henderson, uh, Vice President Eno and Vice President Hernandez. It's refreshing to work with female leadership. Really excited to, to work with you all and, and see what happens. And of course, a majority female board. It's amazing. So very excited about that. Just a few um, updates from Mission College. Want to thank um, former President Vela, trustee Veres, President Henderson, trustee Eno, Chancellor Rodriguez, Vice Chancellor Ruben Smith uh, for joining us at uh, our ribbon cutting for our Student Services Building. Very exciting event um, where the campus community, our local electeds were embraced this because, you know, we are offering a one-stop shop for our students. I also want to share that this past Saturday, we, several of us, almost 60 um, campus eagles participated in the Pacoima Parade. Uh, very, had lots of fun and we used it as a um, enrollment opportunity for our Pacoima site. And um, the parade was actually grand marshaled by uh, Mayor Karen Bass, which was, was just, again, really exciting. Finally, want to invite you all on Tuesday, uh, December 19th, 10 a.m. We will be hosting our grand opening for the Pacoima site. So look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Now on to item H, the First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee and the performance of his or her duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made, which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public um, signed up to address the board besides the one person that already planned? Okay, so um, Katrina Linden. Is she in person or online?
Hi, good afternoon. Um, President Henderson, Chancellor Rodriguez, members of the board. Katrina Linden speaking on behalf of the Campaign for College Opportunity. Congratulations, President Henderson and Vice Presidents Eno and Hernandez on your new roles. I'm here today speaking on agenda items O1 and items O2, 3 and 4. Regarding item O1 of the Seattle University MOU, we thank you for the urgency and intentionality with which you continue to establish meaningful partnerships before your institutions across California and beyond. Today's signing of the CSU-Dominus Hills MOU and the establishment of the Seattle University MOU is a testament to how vital these partnerships are in putting into action our promises of meaningful college and career pathways for all LA students. These partnerships will be key in meeting degree attainment goals and to continue to be a competitive leader in developing a high-skilled workforce. We appreciate the thoughtfulness in which the MOU was produced, including the requirements for students to complete an associate degree transfer, which will provide every student who walks out of your doors with a degree to show for their time, regardless of the path they take in reaching their ultimate college goals. We would also like to uplift the intentional alignment with existing four-year eligibility requirements, but strongly urge you to reconsider language in the coming year to align guaranteed admissions requirements with those of the newly created Cal Get C, the General Education Pathway, which aligns with both UC and CSU transfer. As the CSU and UC moves to adopt a Cal Get C in the next year, strategic alignment across both in-state and out-of-state admissions requirements will be key to simplifying the transfer maze. We look forward to revisiting this issue and collaborating with you all on future events. As you will see to fruition, this MOU and others, we are excited that even more students will see the promise of a four-year university education as a tangible goal through the work you all lead. On items O2 through 4, we know that dual enrollment is a proven tool for educational recovery, student engagement and on-time graduation from both high school and college, especially for students who may not be on a pathway to higher education. We are pleased to see these continued partnerships, local LEAs, especially those like Birmingham Community Charter, who serves 87% low-income students, and Magnolia Public Schools, a leading college prep system focusing on STEAM education. It's clear that your uh, dual enrollment programming is leading the way for providing students access to not only college courses on their own high school campuses, but also the CSU and UC transferable coursework that will bring them closer to a college degree even before graduating high school. We applaud your strategic vision for dual enrollment and know these revised agreements between three LEAs and the comprehensive course offerings is a testament to the intentionality with which you engage our local communities. We thank you for your work on these key student-centered policies and the incredible accomplishments that you've already seen and will see ahead. And we look, look forward to continuing these important efforts with you all in the years to come. Congratulations again to the new board leaders and um, happy new year.
So now we will move on to item I, reports from the board. Um, trustee Veras, please summarize the, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll come back. Trustee Eno, would you please summarize the proceedings of the Legislature and Public Affairs Committee that you chaired on November 15?
Yes, uh, extremely brief. Um, we basically just wrapped up the new, the cycle with some cake, really good carrot cake. Um, we highlighted everything that I did, that we were able to accomplish from last year in the meeting um, that I mentioned last month. And we um, just reviewed quickly some of the new ideas that we're having this upcoming year. But um, we will be much more thorough probably after our first meeting in the new year. Thank you.
Short, sweet and to the point. Um, I will give the, I will summarize the ISS meeting that I chaired on November 15. Um, we had no items to be uh, voted on to recommend to the board, but we did have three um, information items. The first was the financial aid simplification. So um, we had a presentation on um, how the financial aid process is being simplified for students, which is really great because it ties into um, what we're doing already and how we are working to capture information from students and be able to use it to uh, provide better services. Um, we also received the district's uh, strategic plan update and, and enrollment update. And um, so, and um, that ends my report. So next up, we will have trustee Hoffman. If you could summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you so much. We had a special meeting on Wednesday, November 29th of the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, all members were present, trustee Henderson and trustee Hernandez. Um, Ms. Jeanette Gordon was joined by Brianne Wees of KPMG to present the 2022-2023 Annual Financial Audit. Um, in particular, the District Financial Audit and Bond Expenditure Audits. The following topics were discussed: overview of the district external audits and the audit results, district and bond expenditure audit overview, required communications, district and bond expenditure audit other matters, district uncorrected audit misstatements, bond expenditure uncorrected and corrected audit misstatements, non-GAAP policies and practices, independence communications and inquiries. Uh, Ms. Elisa Stillwell of Vasquez and Company presented the 2022-2023 State Compliance and Single Audit Report. The following topics were discussed. Um, Vasquez and Company Engagement Team, so we had an uh, introduction and overview. Um, the audit of the federal and state awards, the federal awards audit, the single audit scope and results of that audit, the state compliance, compliance autoscope and results of that audit and required communications. The district, this is the important part, the district received an unmodified opinion on all audits, which basically means it's a good audit with no material findings. There were a few non-material findings in federal and state awards, but there were no question costs. The committee recommends approval of the annual financial audit, which includes the single compliance audit and the bond financial audit, both of which are included in today's board agenda. and the bond financial audit, both of which are included in today's board agenda, board agenda for approval. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Would you also give an update for, as the board president of the?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, and I'll just be really quick. In my role as President of the TRPC board, I've been asked to participate in events up, down, and around the state. And I was asked to speak at the California School Board Association during one of their, like, keynote lunches. And I participated with Ayesha Lowe, Vice Chancellor Ayesha Lowe of the Chancellor's Office, and two small, small school districts on dual enrollment. And what I want to say is that we talk amongst ourselves a lot about dual enrollment, and we, we have MOUs and CCAP agreements. You really need to do a better job, and I talked to Ms. Velos and the Chancellor about this, and Trustee Ino knows, of getting the message out to other school board members, especially from our smaller school districts. And I know, Trustee Vella, you're, you've been a champion with that as well, because they really don't understand that we have, that we are able to do dual enrollment programs reaching all the way down to the ninth grade. And in some cases, there, there are eighth graders that are doing dual enrollment. So I want to commend you, Dr. Ramon, for being the pilot project from the Chancellor's Office. And it was a really good experience to be at the California School Board Association. It's all K-12 school board members. And I think, I know, Trustee Henderson, you serve on LACSA. And I think we need to be more involved as community college trustees with our K-12 school board member counterparts. So I was grateful to have that opportunity, and it was in San Francisco the last week in November. And then, uh, Trustee, I was asked to be on a panel for the SSJC, which is the statewide Student Senate Conference, which was in Riverside. And I just want to give a shout out to all of our amazing student leaders, student trustees that attend the Student Senate. It was an advocacy, the first ever advocacy summit. We have some great student leaders in LACC D. There were several colleges represented with several student leaders. I would say like maybe 15 or 20 of our students from campuses, different ages. These, these future folks, I mean, they're excited and ready to go. And the feedback that I got from our presentation, which was really about how to engage your local board, that our presentation was the best panel of the whole weekend. So thank you, Student Trustee Cordova. That was really fun. From the Community College League of California. It was great. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Henderson.
Trustee Buelna, would you please summarize the proceedings of your AdHOC Committee to Advance in Language Instruction?
Thank you very much. We had around 25 individuals present, along with yourself and Vice President, now President Henderson. Again, extremely proud of that. We went over AB 1096 that passed and the enrollment. I think our enrollment is around 2,000 on credit. The Chancellor made some, some comments with regard to leading the way in language. We also got a small rural college who informed us that they're starting in language because of LACC D. We went over the schedule with Vice Chancellor Nicole Alva Lopez and reviewing the spring, summer, and fall 2023, and the winter, spring, and summer 2024 schedule. We went over some additional pilot classes, I believe 17 for winter in 2023. Then President Limbaugh went over the details of what he's doing over there at West LA College, which I was reminded of by, by looking at the bus ad this morning, President Limbaugh, which you put in front of me on purpose. Then, let's see, we had some updates from faculty, also from Valley College and the Academic Senate. We talked about some issues between the CSU and the US, and the, and the US, and the UC, and the community colleges with regard to classes that are accepted, not accepted. So I think we all acknowledge, and also scheduling a, a meeting with the State Chancellor's Office, which is forthcoming, and also figuring out how to properly code the in-language classes because they're not easily searchable within our LACC D website. So we're getting more into the details of operationalizing in language within the committee. So it's, it's, it's evolving. And thank you to everyone from our legislative team to our legal team, to our vice chancellors and our presidents for implementing the in-language classes.
Thank you, Trustee Buelna. So now, Student Trustee Cordova, could you please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee that you chaired?
Yes, thank you. And sorry that I missed the election thing. So congratulations of, so yeah. And so at the Student Affairs Committee, we continue to speak about the donations for our clothing and food pantries. We're trying to collectively work together to fill the inventory. Because as you know, some campuses are completely empty while some have some. So we're working collectively to try to reach out to donors. We have also talked about the water bottle stations. Very small issue, but it's something that really does affect our students that constantly having to pay $3 for a water bottle when you can refill it for free if the stations are available. Something that we're trying to happen, which I guess it is in the works. And we're just awaiting the timeline to see when the infrastructure will go down at each campus. We also discussed EBT access on campus. And I did get to sit in or speak to the Basic Needs Committee and just trying to make sure that EBT is more available on campuses, at the school stores, for those who are eligible for government assistance. And then we also talked about the free phones donations, or not donations, but I had a chance to actually go to the Department of Public Social Services office. And I spoke to the vendors who give out these free phones. And I learned that they are actually paid by the government to pass these phones out. So all you really need to do is reach out because they're obligated to get these phones out to those who are government assistant eligible. So I was able to get one of their contacts and we're hoping to reach them out because they said that they will be willing to come to events and things of that nature to give out free phones and tablets to the students who are without. We also discussed an issue regarding the chemistry department that uses the AL EKS site. It's like a program similar to Sengage. We found out that it isn't EOPS eligible. So those who have to take that class are dealing with that. So we're trying to figure out if we can work with our faculty members to see how we can make that more, that resource more available to students. And yeah, as Trustee Hoffman said, I was able to chair, or not chair, but speak at the student panel for finding your way in, or, sorry, managing yourself in the board, which was kind of interesting to me that they asked, since I'm still trying to figure out how to manage myself in the board. But it was really good to see that a lot of student trustees kind of are in the same boat as me. And I also learned that, I guess, one of my biggest struggles as a student trustee is trying to see how I can effectively get things done. When I learned, really, my position is more just to advocate for that. And those who are in charge of helping me get it done are you guys. So if you hear anything that you could potentially help me with, I would love you guys could reach out, help me collaborate because we're working effectively with that. So for future ideas that we want to work on, is we're trying to figure out how to manage the BO6 hold that is going to come up this semester. As you know, many students are going to be not able, or they're not going to be able to enroll into winter or spring classes if they have a past due balance. And so this is the first time that the hold is coming back since the pandemic. And we're trying to figure out how we can work with the district to help students get these balances paid off. So yeah, that's something that we are looking forward to working on in the future. So thank you.
Trustee Cordova, just on that note of helping you fulfill your goals, I, I'd love to, I love what you're doing in terms of the basic needs and getting food distribution and to our basic needs centers. So we have, I have a meeting with every table, which is a ready-made food subscription service. It's looking to collaborate with the district and our basic needs, but I'd love for you to be a part of that meeting.
Thank you.
And while you're on the mic, VP Hernandez, if you could summarize the proceedings of your recent basic needs.
Yes, so we had our meeting on February, or sorry, February, December 1st. And we talked about our goals for this past year, which was to stabilize the pilot student housing program and renew the contract for another two years, which we are happy to report that we are able to do success on those ends. And we discussed goals for next year, which will be using feedback and best practices learned from our district pilot housing program to develop a comprehensive housing policy to inform any future district housing development. So excited to jump into that work. And then also, we discussed creating, really focusing on how we provide more basic needs services to our student parents in aligning our child development centers with future student housing programs and how we can better support those students. And then I just want to give a shout out, we, Kelly King and our Gateways Program presented at the Basic Needs Conference in San Jose this last week and did an incredible job. It was standing room only. And those of you that are unfamiliar with Gateways at Southwest College, they are changing lives and have such an amazing, compelling presentation on how they're doing that and really, really, really inspired by their work. And we will be presenting on our student pilot housing program with room and board at our CCLC conference in January. So really excited to be engaged with all of our partners on, on basic needs.
Thank you for that, VP Hernandez. So next up, we have Item. Oh, you're in stealth mode. Could you please, Trustee Veras, give us a reporting of your, was that FEMPAC?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Committee meeting.
Thank you, President Henderson. The FEMPAC Committee reviewed several items. One, which is up for board approval today, and that's the Performance Audit presented by KPMG. The 2023 Performance Audit focused on overhead costs, contingent management, change order management, project scoping, and initial budgeting. The auditing firm identified two low-priority audit observations related to compliance and standard operating procedures. They didn't identify any significant internal controls, controlled deficiencies within the context of the audit, and didn't identify any charges that did not conform to the requirements of Prop A, Prop A, Measure J, Measure CC. And all of the KPMG recommendations haven't addressed by the Program Management Office. Our campus management teams all were part of presentations that came forward and discussed the implementation process that took forward. So the committee unanimously motions to recommend approval of the audit as it stands here on the agenda today. Additionally, the committee heard an update and had a presentation in regards to East LA College E3 building elevators and the challenges that were faced and the concerns that were expressed in public to this board, and reviewed a number of recommendations laid out by an outside evaluator that included new comprehensive service agreements and essentially how to respond to elevators going through various levels. I'm going to probably get some of these. There's a number of features that were recommended. But I think the, the core of it really stands at communicating to the campus community, dealing with the appropriate technology and choices for elevator equipment, and ensuring that service agreements are held to high standards in which any kind of lack of operation could be handled in the best possible ways. And so this is a prioritization that the committee demanded of our staff. And there's a number of, of work activities that are to take place now and through the end of the year to ensure that we can have functioning elevators at all times on the campus. We also received a Measure LA update. It was a progress report update, including the number of projects and pre-1970s buildings and budget distributions and, and where essentially prioritizations would take place in regards to Measure LA. Measure LA is now into full effect and work for our colleges. The final presentation that was had was regarding wayfinding overview. And essentially, it was a really good conversation about being able to utilize maps online, maps on your phone, kiosk systems. And so I think the ideal, and this is something that we need to continue to have deeper dive conversations, is the ability to get a class, go from however you get there, train, car, bus, from your phone, and get exactly to the building your class takes place in. And so I think if we can have an integrated scenario that talks about wayfinding that would cut down on some of the confusion, some of the challenges that our campuses face. Right now, we're mostly PDFs on our websites. We mostly get to a Google map or an Apple map that's kind of around the campus. But the presentations that were shown to us included everything from 3D, you know, viewfinding to, to a GBS opportunity to get to the, to the, basically to your front door of your class, which lies some exciting future possible conversations. So we didn't have enough time to cover our, our, our waste and recycling conversations. And hopefully, the next committee can continue to deal with those storage areas and, and that waste efforts in the future. So that's the committee report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now on to Item I2. May I have a motion and a second on Item I2? Motion made by VP Ino. I'll second. Henderson. A roll call, please.
Student Trustee Cordova's advisory vote? Yes. Trustee Buelna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Thank you, colleagues. Now for Item I3. May I have a motion and a second on I3?
Second.
VP Ino moved and Hernandez second. I'm sorry, Trustee, Student Trustee Cordova, second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Student Trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buelna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
All right, thank you for that. And next for Item J1. May I have a motion and a second on Item J1?
Some, second.
Item moved by VP Ino and second by Trustee Hoffman. Can we have a roll call, please?
Student Trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buelna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Thank you. Now for Item K. We'll now turn the mic over to Chancellor Rodriguez for his report.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, happy to do this report in, in two parts. First, to provide some general observations and the updates to the board. And the second piece will be a formal presentation to the board on one of our incredibly important units here at the district and serving our nine colleges. So let me start with just giving you a sense of some general updates on matters. First, I want to again commend your reading and your, and your attention to the December Monthers Chancery Report, Chancellor's Report. There's a lot of good stuff in there. It's packed with lots of ways in which the colleges fulfill the mission of this district and really manifesting and demonstrating, implementing of the public's resources into the success of students, which is our, our primary mission. So it's a college-by-college account, district-wide as well, of some of the ways in which this good work is taking place. If you are ever talking to someone about what LACC D is up to, what it's doing, how it fulfills its services, and it's a responsibility and obligation to serve our community, pass them this monthly. It's a compilation of a lot of good stuff with links and whatnot. So I thank our college presidents. of a lot of good stuff with links and whatnot. So I thank our college presidents for always responding to our requests to put this stuff together, their college teams and PIOs and vice presidents, deans, and faculty and others who really make this work come alive. So again, thank you, and I again commend your reading to that. It's a very substantive report. Secondly, on the ceremony, transfer MOUs, you saw today very vividly of the importance of this work that we have with our CSU's. I want to remind everyone that we have transfer mission guarantees, transfer mission agreements with the University of California campuses, our CSU campuses as demonstrated today, and a growing number of private universities and colleges that indeed are part of the larger network of providing transfer pathways to our students. Want to point that we have established a MOU, a transfer with ASU, the Arizona State University system. We have transferred and established an MOU for our Whittier College community, which is called the Community College Advantage there. So our colleges are taking advantage of that in our students. And then next week, I want to extend an invitation because we will be signing a ceremonial MOU. It's not in a board meeting, but in this very room, inviting our community to come over to celebrate Seattle University. You heard that referenced in a couple of occasions already. You may know that it's one of the premier institutions in the country. It's located in Seattle, Washington. And then having the opportunity to visit with their president several months ago, we've found a very opportune chance and circumstance to find ourselves with common interests. Again, providing opportunities for transfer to our students. So we invite you, it's next week, next Wednesday, in this room about 11:30. This will be a quick ceremonial signing in a reception. President is coming down to Seattle University. So we invite our members of the board and other members of our community to join us in this wonderful celebration. Moving on to the next item here, wanted to commend Dr. Smith and the Build LACC. This was a lot of fun at LA Harbor College. I know we've done one before at East LA College. But, and I thank Dr. Rada for hosting this opportunity for students to find out about green work, green jobs, green careers, and a whole variety of, you see the community partners who came out, who supported this idea of these kinds of jobs and opportunities for the future. Local high school students were all over LA Harbor College and the parking lot was full of resources. EV vehicles, I went out for a test drive myself on one of the EV vehicles, almost drove away, but I got drawn back because it was a very, very nice vehicles. We've never driven an EV as I haven't. It's a nice opportunity. So anyway, I wanted to really point that out. And Dr. Smith, thank you and your Build LACC team, Harvard College, and the others, were really extending opportunities for local high school students to find out about green jobs and whatnot, and really raising echo awareness, echo consciousness for a green and sustainable future. That is a priority of this district that sustains that. And again, employment economic opportunities also a goal of ours. So again, it combines a lot of good interests into one event. So I wanted to congratulate all those who were involved with that. You can see the, our partners there and others who got involved. Moving forth, this is the second part of the presentation. It's a super important that we take time and we've not done this too often, where we take time during a chancellor's report or other parts of the board meeting, where we really highlight and give an opportunity for key offices, units, individuals to provide a presentation and update to the board on the activities. There's been considerable interest, attention, rightful attention to where the opportunities associated with how we handle complaints, we deal with sexual harassment, and we build a climate of support. How we govern the climate of our institutions, both in and outside of the classroom, what happens when this occurs? So we thought it would be opportunity, a good opportunity today, a timely discussion with the board to move forward. As has been referenced earlier in the conversation, last Friday, we did, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, send to every single employee our reaffirmation of our commitment to an environment that is hassle-free, that is harassment-free, free of discrimination bias, and other kinds of ways that take people off of fulfilling their mission or providing an environment where they can do their best work. We're very serious about that. And, and today gives the board an opportunity to actually hear one of the key offices that is responsible for governing, supporting, and seeing through the due process associated with these types of activities. So it's my pleasure to introduce our, I'm not so new now, almost one year old, one-year anniversary director Natalie Mason Kinsey, who is the director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility. We did change our office name recently to provide an overview to the board on this very, very important work. So Mason Kinsey, welcome to the, to the board meeting, and we look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Rodriguez. Greetings to the entire board. Congratulations to Madam President, Henderson, and Vice President Ino, and Vice President Hernandez. Thank you all for having me today. This is going to be a little bit of a review. I forgive me, since I'm new, I'm going to go backwards before I go forward. My understanding is that there has not been a presentation like this since around 2018, so some of this may be review, but we're going to go forward. I'm going to start with the first slide, just the mission of the Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility that was recently added. Want to let you all know that part of what we do is ensure all of our compliance with federal and state statutes, district-wide goals related to prohibiting harassment and discrimination, as well as improving diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility for all of us. So this is not an exhaustive list. This is just the big picture list. There are details there that aren't included, things like classes and course scheduling, things like working with our DSPS offices to make sure that our students who are differently able to have all of the tools and resources that they are entitled to in order to fully participate in all of our programs and educational activities. The next slide really talks about specifically the board policies and administrative regulations that are currently in place. I want to highlight the first two, Administrative Regulation C14 and Administrative Regulation C15. These are the two policies and regulations that govern how and when we investigate. And I say when because people have said lots of things today. I want to be clear. Everything that comes into the ODI office is not investigated. Let me be clear. It is not. Some things do not belong to ODI, and those things are, I'm going to say, referred out. However, just because it's referred does not mean it's a closed matter. It doesn't mean that it's not looked into and reviewed. So when I say things are moved, it's things like when we get complaints from students and others. Some of them that we don't take have to do with financial aid. So if a student files a complaint about their financial aid award stating that their award was incorrect or that it was not given because of a protected category, that is something that we do not investigate, however it is referred for investigation to others. There are other pieces of this, but I want to be clear that the reason C14 and C15 also have not been revised yet is because we are waiting on the new regulations because both of those contain segments and pieces of Title IX. So as you may or may not know, the Office for Civil Rights will be releasing new Title IX regulations and guidelines where they were originally scheduled to be given to us in October. That has been pushed back to March now, so that my office is in contact with the Office of General Counsel as well as the Deputy Chancellor in terms of putting out a plan, so the board will get a plan of implementation once those new regulations are released in March. Right now, tentatively, we're thinking that we will be coming to you as a board with our plan for whatever those changes and implementations will be sometime in the summer, so either the June, July, or August meeting, because that incorporates all of the 60- and 90-day review periods. So that is something that we will be coming back to you about, so that the next time we have this conversation, all of those board policies and regulations will be updated and they will all be current. Next slide, please. This is the history portion. In 2017, the Board of Trustees created a task force to review the work of the ODI office. There was an extensive report, I believe, that that group and task force met multiple times during the 2017 school year, calendar year, and in 2018, they issued their findings to the Board of Trustees. Because of COVID, there was a little bit of a delay in implementation, so that that implementation of those board recommendations did not come about immediately. However, in 2020, they did initiate through Human Resources, some staffing reorganizations within the Personnel Commission that are now being, which are being brought into fruition now. Specifically, one of the concerns that was raised by the task force and others was that ODI formerly reported to the Office of General Counsel. That has now been changed. ODI now reports into the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. One of the other concerns that was raised was how complaints and other issues were being tracked in the office. They were formerly being tracked via, I'm going to say Excel spreadsheet and OneDrive files. They are now centralized and they are located in a Guardian complaint tracking system. And I want to emphasize here, this complaint tracking system isn't just for things that come into the district. All of the campuses have been trained, and they are now using this complaint tracking system as well. So that instead of sending an email or having a phone call that may or may not get answered in the evening or after hours, it's literally, everything goes into Guardian, so that if a sexual assault happens on a Saturday night, I get a ping on my cell phone because I have it linked to Guardian, so that then I can reach out if I need to, to the sheriffs or to the president, whoever it is that's filing that, that matter at that moment. Next slide, please. In 2022, there was more centralization in terms of what was happening with compliance and coordination. This also means what the campuses were responsible for versus what the office here at the district office was responsible for. There was also another change. All of the campus-based Title IX coordinator positions and the regional Title IX coordinators that previously existed, that has been, we've moved away from that model and moved back to having a centralized model because there was some, a lot of turnover and that lack of continuity and that lack of applicant and complaint tracking system that was centrally located meant that a lot of cases were not properly handled, and so that was something that, that needed to be handled. In addition to that, now we've got new investigators and senior compliance investigators that have been hired. In 2023, there was a new compliance investigator hired in January, as well as an ADA compliance officer here at the district office. For those of you who don't know, that is Cassandra Lawson. She's been amazing in helping us organize and get folks on board with their ADA accommodations, not just the requests, but also fulfilling the requests. Again, there was kind of a gap and lacking continuity there. I was hired in February. I started February 1st as the new director of the Office for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The former director, Brittany Grice, left us to join Glendale Community College in the summer of 2022. And we also hired in February and May, two new senior compliance investigators. So they are also deputy Title IX coordinators who have been trained and certified as well. That's Mr. Cody Hunt and Ms. Kyra Nielsen. And finally, we are, I just got the list yesterday. I'm so excited. The PC has given us a list for two new recruitments for compliance investigators. So once we complete those searches, that will mean we will have replaced or rehired three new compliance investigators, and those compliance investigators will be assigned to each of our campuses following conversations with our presidents to make sure that we get the right fit for each campus. Next slide, please. So we've had a lot of conversation today about complaints, what's happening to them, where are they, what happened, where did they go, what do our counts look like? This is what I have been able to put together from those OneDrive complaints, files, and also from the old Excel spreadsheet so far. I will let you know, these numbers have changed a little bit since I had to get this ready for the board on 12/5, but as of this morning, want you to know that there are 224 total incidents that have been reported. And that total number of incidents that have been converted to cases is 210 as of this morning. And the total number of cases closed is now 181. The average days to case completion is 47.8%. These complaints are all of the ones that have come in through our Guardian system. They also include some that have come in paper format, so we still are taking paper forms. If people are asking what happens to those, we're taking them and trying to convert them into Guardian, so that what happens is that piece of paper gets scanned in and it becomes a complaint with a number in the Guardian system. Next slide, please. Types of complaints, because that's also a question that we get a lot. Here's how the breakdown looks. The vast majority, the lion's share, are discrimination, harassment, and retaliation cases. I will say again, as of this morning, these numbers have gone up. We now have 143 that are reported to date as of this morning. Sexual harassment and sexual misconduct cases, number 54 as of this morning, and other is 22. I will just say, sometimes the other moves back and forth because sometimes after we've had a chance to talk to the complainant, sometimes the complainant and the respondent, the charges change and the incident changes, and so it may move from one category to another. It's not always static. So that that other is what it's reported as, but it may end up changing and moving to another category. For those, I will say, when the notice of investigation or the notice that we've received it comes in, they're given all of the policies, not just the one that would apply if they had, if they said it was a sexual harassment case, for example. Next slide. Last but not least, people ask how we get complaints and who's filing them. Anonymous complaints obviously is the most robust category for obvious reasons, followed by employee complaints, which actually surprised me when I came into the district. I thought we would have a much higher number of student complaints, quite frankly, higher than the employee number. So I was pleasantly surprised. I will say again, these numbers have gone up as of this morning. Anonymous complaints reported to date are 132 as of today. There are 89 employee complaints as of this morning, and 69 student complaints as of this morning. Next slide, please. So also wanted to talk about training statistics. Our records show that we've got only 25% of all of our employees throughout the district. This is all campuses and the ESC and all of the other outlying places. It's at 25%. That's really, really poor. We are working on that. I will let you all know part of that. I'm not going to lie, during COVID, there was a lack in training in terms of, there was very little being done. But now, now we are doing not just online trainings, but also in-person trainings have come back. We've got, we had a very robust training schedule for this year alone, so that most of our campus partners, so our BIT teams, our deans, our department chairs, a lot of our students, our student leaders and student government, our student athletes, they have all been trained in person this last year. So going forward, I plan to share that with the board and those, those numbers about who's attending the trainings, be they in person and live, those numbers will become available as we go forward. Next slide, please. Wanted to share with you our strategies and goals. Part of what we've done is a website update. I don't know how many of you checked the old website. It was very cumbersome, long. If I was a student, I would get lost before I even found the tab to file a complaint. We've changed that, streamlined it, taken out the things that don't belong. There will be some additions that need to come, as I said, in March. When the changes come with regard to Title IX, the webpages will need to be updated again. But now we have complete contact information for all of our ODI team here at the office, as well as our campus ADA coordinators, because that was also a communications area that we were lacking in. And all of those now have a link directly to the person's email, and it also lists their telephone number as opposed to just saying, please contact this office in general. Because we find that we want to make sure that people are finding the right place immediately, instead of having to click and click again and click again. Also wanted to share, working with our communications and marketing folks, and also our team at the Vision Resource Center, the CCC Vision Resource Center, as well as here locally, also working with folks in SAP to add some of these, these, I'm going to say, sexual harassment trainings and other trainings, anti-bias, as well as the anti-bullying. Some of those things are there, but we just did not have a good communication system to tell faculty and staff where to go, and also to have the ability to assign them to folks. So that is changing, and that's where we are now. The implementation of consequences for failure to complete mandatory trainings is something that the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources and myself and Deputy Chancellor Burke have been discussing. That, those are still in the preliminary stages. Obviously, we don't want to put something in place that's going to go against what the new rules and regs are with Title IX. We only want to have to do that once and bring that to the board once, instead of bringing it back and forth. And that completes my report. Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you. I'll go down, start to my far left with trustee Hoffman.
Thank you so much. That was a
Thank you so much. That was a really great presentation. I appreciate it. And this question is probably more for the chancellor because I think I've asked repeatedly about training. I think this board has asked actually many times about it training. How can we make sure, I mean, that's kind of really disgusting that only 25% of our employees have done their sexual harassment training and, you know, as someone who works for a public institution of higher education and I'm a manager, I'm responsible to make sure that my team engages in training or it's reflected in my performance evaluation. I mean, I don't know what else we can do, but I really feel like it's incumbent upon our college presidents and the management team to make sure everybody is engaged in training, you know, and faculty leaders. Same thing. I mean, we need to make sure everybody does the training in a timely manner or there should be serious consequences. Thank you.
Well, yes, trustee Hoffman, I don't disagree. And yeah, that, I remember when we were putting this presentation together is an acceptable number and something that we will work towards and starting with management, making sure that we lead the way and model the responsibility associated. We did, well, it fell off during the, the COVID period, but that's not an excuse.
Do we use an outside agency? Because we get automatic reminders where I work that it's time to do your sexual harassment training and then it's offered in different modalities, including in-person.
So we do now. That's something that we've been working on and that is part of what the conversation was with the BRC. Because there is that capability, but it had not been used by our district. It had been used by other districts, but not ours. And so that is something that I had conversations with them about and they are more than willing to help us do that and implement. But it's also a conversation that needs to be had, obviously with the board and with the presidents and others.
Thank you. And thank you, chancellor.
Thank you. Trustee Allen.
First of all, thank you for the presentation and, you know, I think you're doing a really good job as you're moving forward with this. Would it help for us, you know, to perhaps, you know, expedite the hiring of the two senior investigators or is there any more positions perhaps that you could recommend to the chancellor?
There are, and I'm not sure about expediting because we are literally in the interview process. The list just came out this week. So I think, I'm not sure who expedited, but it did get expedited because they were posted in October and November. So I think we're well on our way. Thank you. But in terms of going forward for other recommendations, yes, I think, I think we should have some conversations because I think there are still some gaps in terms of who is responsible for what. But I think some of that will be ironed out when we get our new training manager. Because that's where some of the conversation left with who's turning it on, who's assigning the training to folks who need to have it, who's deciding what that deadline is. There was a lot there and I think we have all the pieces. It's just that we need to figure out who's in charge of pulling that trigger. And I think some of that will come when the training manager comes.
Okay, thank you. So chancellor, I think for me, it's just, would be, I think, a priority for us to, you know, continue to staff this office. And I think, you know, obviously you saw the pandemic. I'm sure it was those numbers in 21 that we had the low numbers. But I think for me, that that would be priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Berens.
Thank you. Is it possible to go back a couple of slides? Eric has questions on the slide.
Sure.
The one with the number of complaints.
Number of complaints? Overall or the?
Yeah. Uh, this one here.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, the next one, next page. Both, both are sort of connected here to the question. Do you, is there a sense, if you want to go back, because I think 2021, certainly a COVID year, and I think we want to take the fact that potentially not on campus as a year that's down. But if we were to look at it as a longer assessment, what does that look like? Can you speak to years prior and and I will say that I know one of the hotly contested debated items that we had at the board was a star rating process and concerns complaints by the previous director. And I don't, you know, I know there's resignations and there's moves-ons, but certainly, you know, my hope is always to see human resources and, and, and areas like ODEI have a great deal of stability to have consistency in the way we're addressed because complaints sometimes handed over to others is very challenging. But, but can you comment on, you know, I know you're new, but make an assessment of what do we look like if we wanted to go back a little further? And two, to understand how much impact those changeovers, potentially that star rating issue or the fight, you maybe weren't here for the star rating, but the the fight amongst the employees with their salaries getting re-graded and reassessed, the instability essentially. How much impact do you think it had in terms of the efficiency and effectiveness of the office? And then I have a second question after that.
So I will say this, I am still looking to make sure that I've uncovered all of the cases because I think part and parcel of some of the turnover, but also COVID meant that just record keeping was not where it should be. And, and by that, I can just say it's, it's interesting to me that, that things were not centralized before that. I understand people having their own personal, but, but this is, cases do not belong to individuals. They belong to the district. And so that whoever took this role, whoever sat in this chair should have been able to put their finger on all of the cases in any given moment. And that's just, that's not the case right now. So that's one of my personal goals is to make sure that going forward, there's not this gap in terms of what is, what is, just what is. And I also think for me personally, you'll hear this later. One of my suggestions would be going forward that, that we do quarterly reports because part of this is, is communication. And, and part of communications means being clear, being truthful and, and really being able to say, here's where we are, here's where we want to go, what is it going to take to get there? Who do we need in the room? Who, who do we need to tag in and lean on to make, make the movement? Because part of what concerns me is that we have students, we have staff, we have faculty who filed complaints and I, I've heard this a lot. My office was the place where things came to die. And, and people did not hear anything. They would file a complaint and claim or, or not, and I don't know because I wasn't here, but that there was no follow-up, there was no follow-through. They didn't know what was going on. And my, my personal goal is for that not to happen. I, I strive to be responsive as much as I can, right? Because there are limits. I'm not going to be responsive to people who it's not your complaint. You don't get to call and ask me about a complaint that you didn't file. But, but I also want people to be able to trust this office again and I know that they don't. And so going forward, that is my goal to be as transparent as I can with where we are and what we need in order to continue to function in a way that is going to be helpful. Because this office is not supposed to make life more difficult for our students or our staff and our faculty. We are supposed to be helpful. That is, we are supposed to be responsive. We are supposed to be a customer service oriented unit. And, and that customer service needs to be at the forefront.
Thank you. And, and I would love, and if you don't have it with you, if you can send that to the board afterwards, what we looked like pre-COVID. If that's possible. If it's not possible, please explain why it's not possible. But I would want to, I want to get a sense as well. You know, there's been some commentary about sexual harassment being rampant in the district. You know, we're 10, 15,000 person workforce plus our students, because this collects our students as well in these conversations. And, and I want to understand when, when comments are made like that, the degree of, of accuracy and, and truthfulness of there and to understand the processes that need to go into place to assess. So COVID is, is, is in special situation and period of time because people were not interacting next to each other. Digitally, it's, you know, I'm sure there were still, clearly there was still harassment during that period. But to understand clearly what the numbers say, I think is really important. The other side to it too is, is we have a sense as to what does this district look like in comparison to other districts? I mean, I think you mentioned the centralization piece, which is very critical and important piece. But, but how do we compare in terms of organizational structure to other places that you can see and acknowledge? And if not, in other words, I, I want us to, I would like to see us be the, the, the most effective office division in the state. And sometimes in order to be the, the sort of most effective, you need a benchmark process to assess what you're doing and how you're doing. It's not just a matter of number, because we are bigger than everybody else. But how do we sort of get to the point of being able to use data to drive us to be an incredibly effective organization inside of an organization that sometimes is very challenged with lots of process and lots of change?
To answer your, your first question way back, yes, I can provide the data that we have. I, I don't believe I have anything. I have to double check prior to 2013, but I will see what I have and I will put together something for the board. I don't know how we look compared to other districts in California. I would have to do some research on that. In general, yes, we can compare ourselves and benchmark with others because that's information that is, that is out there. If what you wanted was a comprehensive study, we can talk about that because there are experts that also do that as well. Those of you who may not be aware, the CSU just did that. They had a comprehensive study done in this area by the Cozen Group. So that there are people that, that are experts in that. But if you want just my take on it, I could give you that, but I don't know what that, that would be worth the two cents.
Familiar with the CSU study that had been announced and that's, I was curious about our side of it. Thank you for that. And then the last piece I had was on this training piece that comes forward. I think, you know, as, as, you know, that's, I, you know, I got to be honest, I, I'm in a workplace where everybody has to do it. And everybody does do it because it's a condition of our employment. If, if we don't start having conversations about conditions of employment, I think it's important we do it for, for, you know, tetanus shots. We do it for other things that are, you know, that are out there. But, but I will want to say though, that we have to get to the point where the trainings and offerings are robust, are consistent. You know, I have a monthly schedule where I can send new employees to and, and can, can, can do this. And we refresh every two, uh, two years, which I think is kind of standard out there. But, so it's not just a one-time, but it's a continuous. But of, of, of that 25% there, can you break that down for us? Is, is the 25% issue administrative? Is it faculty? Is it staff? Is it, do you have a sense of that? And if you can't do it now, please send us that information.
I will send it, I'll, I'll send you the breakdown. I will say it's mostly staff right now. And I will say a lot of administrative staff on the campuses. So what you will see is that your department chairs, your deans, and that is because we do those in person. They have the opportunity to do the online training through the VRC as well, but we do them specifically in person. We've been scheduling them since I arrived. And I know they were doing them previous to my arrival, but they kind of stopped during COVID. But, and when, and when staffing went down in the office, there wasn't enough staff to provide it in person. But now that we're fully staffed or about to be fully staffed, we've brought it back. So that there's a, I'm going to say a monthly training schedule. I'll, I can provide that to the board, what we've done since I got here. Because what we started with was reevaluating where, not just where most of the complaints were coming from, but where we felt like there were those key personnel that needed this immediately. So for example, your athletic coaches and your athletic staffing. They have to have it for a number of reasons, but also we wanted them to have it. So we're doing it, that one happens fall and spring, obviously, because you've got your fall coaching staff. And then there's some changeover in the spring for some campuses for other sports that are not offered in the fall. Our, your deans and chairs were very willing to participate in this training as well. They've had their separate trainings. And so I, that's why I lean on the staff. And then there are students, our student government leaders were more than happy to, to be trained as well as our student workers are coming up this month and next month. And so December into January is going to be your student workers. Student staff will do that one again in March and April because obviously student staff turnover with the semesters. But I think I will provide that, also in the hopes to get feedback. Because I, this, this is the first time we're doing it as robustly with the in-person piece and, and we're, we're willing to hear the feedback from folks about which things need to be in person, but also those things that can be online. Because we, and we've been doing them both ways, by the way. So it's, there's usually an in-person scheduled for the month and then there's a catch-all for that same group of folk. It's online.
Thank you for those. Also, trustee Perdover.
Yeah, I have some feedback. I'm a student worker, so I believe that I did receive a training notification stating me to do it. And I didn't do it, not because I don't care about sexual harassment, but because I feel like the, as a district, we tend to email bomb a lot and sometimes those emails can, you know, get lost. I think as for feedback, I think we should continue to have hybrid so that folks can have more opportunity to do so. And then my question is, as a student, if I was dealing with sexual harassment, how would I go about filing a complaint? I've never been in an incident like that thankfully, but I would kind of want to know so I could share with my peers because I know you said that the website was updated. So it's like more user friendly. So if you could just like, um, share the website again with me. Sorry, because I missed it.
No problem, I can. And I will say for students, we don't all, we don't always only rely on the website. Your campus partners. So all of the folks in your counseling center, your BIT teams, your women's centers, all of those places where students tend to go for help, there's the staff that have been trained already. So they will either take that paper complaint or your verbal complaint and they will put it into Guardian for some of our students who may have challenges with accessing the system. They may not have access at home to internet, for example, or other things like that. So they've all been trained to do it. And again, there's also the, the paper format that we still have that students can take and send in or hand in. I still get a couple of those every now and again, not as often, but I can certainly send you the link.
Thank you. Yeah. And then I know you said that you have like an app where like you're notified about when a complaint is made. Are you in any, or like maybe future, in the future, do you look maybe to partner with the Everbridge? Because I know like the Everbridge app is created by our, like sheriff's office so that as students, we can report any incident on campus, whether that be fire, et cetera, et cetera. So I think maybe that'd be good to also partner with. That way, like if I don't want to go to a counselor and I don't want to go online, maybe I could just report it through the Everbridge app and then like someone will, maybe there's a way that we can like, because that, I mean, that app is used to report things. So I mean, it just makes sense that we could like collaborate.
I will look into that. It depends on what the contract says with Guardian. Since I didn't create that app, it's, it's actually, we pay for it as a district. It's a contract. So I would have to see if there's any wiggle room in there for Everbridge to talk to Guardian behind the scenes.
Oh, so sorry, because I think I didn't really understand. So the Guardian is a, is an app, is that open to?
Guardian is the complaint tracking system. So I'll send you the link. And if you click it, once you fill out that complaint form online, I get a ping on my phone that tells me I have a complaint. Because I have it set that way in case. So for example, if you're filing a grade complaint on a Saturday night, eh, I can, I can say I can get back to you on Monday. If you're filing a sexual assault complaint, I need to get on the phone immediately, even if it's Saturday night at nine o'clock. And so there was no other way for me to know the difference other than it pinging me for everything and going in and reading it to make sure.
Right. And even if like the Guardian doesn't partner with our Everbridge, maybe as a district ourselves, we can like maybe alter the Everbridge app that we have to where people could also like maybe make reports on there. I'm just saying like the more resources we have, the better we will do in reporting and like getting back to that maybe. But thank you.
Thank you. And I will, I'll follow up with our sheriffs because I have conversations with them a lot.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Borman, do you have any?
I know you've answered this multiple times, but just to clarify. So, so there is an online training available to anybody right now?
Right now, today through the VRC, correct.
So like, if, so I can go, I'm just, I'm using my own personal, you know, my employment as an example. I can go on and I can access it. It's a, it's a web, you know.
Correct. You can, you can go on and register. Yep. You could if you wanted to. And you could go on as long as you are in the VRC. If you're not registered in the VRC, you would probably have to register yourself and then assign yourself that training or request it to be assigned to you. But it's there and it's open.
So that it's, you know, we know that all of our employees and, you know, need to take this training. Is there a way where it's not requiring some sort of registration, but it's, I can go in, find the email in my inbox and click on a link and it's there?
I don't think so. I think it has the capacity. I don't think LACCD has done that yet. That's what we're trying to figure out who's in charge of turning it on. But I think the answer is yes. I would need to go back to my notes with my meeting with the, the folks from the VRC to answer that.
Okay. Yeah. Just echoing what everyone else is saying. I mean, this opens the district up to legal liability if we have that 25% of folks that are not doing training.
No, that's 25% that are.
Oh, that are.
That's only 25% that are, I'm sorry. That's only 25% that are, I'm sorry, sorry.
So yeah, I think it's, that should be definitely a number one priority.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to Sarah's question? Is that okay? I can, okay. So every employee doesn't have their own set of requirements in terms of what trainings they've attended or what they need to do next. Because what I heard you say was anybody can go on the VRC and just sign up. But that doesn't sound like a very efficient tracking system. I mean, I just know that in my, because I'm required and it is a condition of employment, that there is a system setup that knows when I complete my training, HR gets a notice. You know, there's no hold on my paycheck or anything else, which there very well could be if I didn't complete the trainings. I know all, I have all the information for every staff member that reports to me. If they've completed the training, it's my responsibility as a manager to send out a notice to them. So that would alleviate that issue of, I get email bombs like trustee Cordova was talking about. I mean, I think we as a district need to look at a more comprehensive system so that we are actually tracking the employee and when they've completed their, and I think this goes to your, I see you shaking your head, Jeff. I think this is what you were talking about when you made a comment from the floor earlier. So I'd like to make that request. I know that's not opening it up for motions and requests, but I think that might help.
I think that would help. And I think that's the piece that I'm saying is missing in terms of who's in charge of that, who's in charge of making sure that part works. Because right now, I can go in and run, which I did to get the 25%, run a list of everybody who's got an LACCD email, et cetera, et cetera, right? All the other emails that belong to us. I ran that report out of the VRC to get to that number. And so you are correct. I don't, I don't know if there was and it doesn't exist anymore, or if that person happened to leave and it, nobody knows it, I don't know. I'm still new.
This is, this is not rocket science. You know, sexual harassment training is required by the state of California. Every single company is doing this. It's not hard. So if we can figure this out, it's really not a, it's really not hard. So, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not directing that towards you.
And, and again, we have the tools. It's just we didn't, we stopped in the process of implementation and/or we didn't complete that piece that you're talking about. Because it's obvious that's what the VRC is for. Other districts in the state, that is what they use it for and that is how they use it. It's literally, I don't know who was in charge of doing it for the district. If it's me, we'll figure it out and make it happen going forward. But I, I will say it's there. It's just right now, it's not configured in that configuration that you were speaking of.
Thank you. So I have questions and comments. So I would love to see our district have a zero tolerance policy on sexual harassment and discrimination in any of its forms. And for one, my question is, because you mentioned mandatory. Are the trainings mandatory? And is that the reason that we only have 25% participation?
The trainings that we've been providing since I arrived are not mandatory. We, we ask people and we nudge and we lean on them to attend, but they are not currently mandatory. And part of that was because when I arrived, we were in the midst of all the contract negotiations. And so it was not at that time a part of any contract negotiation was what was my understanding.
Okay. So we probably want to make it mandatory. So if we have to work with our bargaining units, let's do that as we talk about conditions of employment and all of that. And also, now that you're kind of compiling all of this data, at some point, it would be helpful to have, when those quarterly reportings to the board. I think we should start from the top down because we as trustees, you know, should set the tone and, and participate in these trainings. But you or whomever else will hold the responsibility should be able to tell the trustees at any time, out of all of the employees, their, their positions, what have you, who's taking this training and who is not. So in, in working on making that mandatory, we need to have some date certain. It isn't, you go in and, you know, it's been two years now, you haven't taken it. Because I agree, it makes us liable. So as soon as we can start working on decreasing that level of liability, you know, and have some stipulations in place, because I truly have a zero tolerance policy for that. And also around bullying and harassment and intimidation from the top down. And as it pertains to some of these cases and retaliation, there are tolerance. And as a board, I want to be the first to say we need to be very intentional about that. You know, I believe in heads rolling. So, yeah. And, you know, I have my, what is it? Gender Equity Committee where we started talking about gathering some of the information you've provided and reviewing some of our sexual harassment and discrimination policy to put some teeth in it, but to also just get a bitter feel for where we failed, you know, our stakeholders. So I want to thank you because you've just given me a level of excitement that I'm just excited about this and about us moving forward and just, you know, not being the dregs of society in terms of LA Community College and how we handle these types of issues within our district and to really show our stakeholders and the public that we're really making an effort to do better. So thank you very much.
That's one question, sorry. I, I think, you know, we've all sort of had conversations and then to be very clear, like we have complaints that are filed and then an investigation process that occurs. You haven't, I don't know if it's like to understand the results of complaints, whether sustained or not, if not sustained, what happens? You know, there are, there are cases.
You want to add to the report to the board so that it has? Okay.
So we can understand what that is. And, you know, oftentimes there, there, you know, I think, I believe every complaint needs to be taken extremely serious. But at times, there can also be complaints that are done in malice, or I hope that's not the case. But what happens there and to understand like, how do we, you know, whether there's not sufficient evidence is one thing, but then there's also questions out of malice as well. That could potentially be a problem. But to understand what we're doing, I'm not, I'm not trying to say it as a quote unquote conviction, but to understand the circumstances of when cases are closed.
So that you want to know the different ways that cases are closed overall? Or do you want more tracking, reporting to the board of each complaint that came in?
Something to understand the resolution. Like I can leave it to your professional sort of thought process and opinion. But, but something in the aggregate, I don't need to know the exact individual cases that are here, but we just want to know what are the circumstances, you know, which you get a closed complaint in our closed case?
So I'll just say in general, that's possible, but not possible. And here's why. Just because we close a complaint does not mean that's the end of the complaint. So just be aware that some of the closed complaints may turn into litigation. They may be an EEO complaint. They may be a California Civil Rights Division complaint. All of those are options that are available to the complainant regardless of whether we have closed the case.
Completely understand. If we get the tail end of.
Yeah, but in the, in the aggregate, I think I can, I'll try to put something together.
They don't want to see it as an open number, but without understanding like the, because we also may need some improvement on our investigation. We may need some improvement on, you know, certain other pieces as well, if that's the case. But then we also need to understand that there's, you know, some standards of, to assess and understand.
So Madam President, that concludes Chancellor's report. Thank you, Ms. Mason Kinsey, for that excellent presentation. And I will offer that we will return to this board on a timely basis in the next quarter as spring begins to give an update on the work that we are doing, the training activities, the implementation of support and staffing at this particular office, NHR. This is a unit that reports to human resources. So we're looking forward to maintaining a constant reporting to the board as we move forward and communicating with our campus communities as to our, again, reaffirmation of an environment that's free of discrimination and harassment. So thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for that. So now we're going to move on to item L, our combined consent calendar. And before we take action on the combined consent calendar, I will be recusing myself from Human Resources Consent Items M2 and M3. So I will be leaving the dais and VP Ino will move forward.
Thank you, Board President. We will note that for the record, we will call you right back in as soon as we take care of this matter. Thank you. This is to mitigate any appearance of real or perceived conflict of interest. Thank you very much for your consideration.
We now have to review our combined consent calendar for items M1 through Z4. These items include consent calendars for Human Resources, Personnel Commission, Academic Affairs, Student Services, Budget and Finance, and Business and Facilities. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent calendar from items M1 through Z4?
I have a quick question. Does this mean we can still pull items once we?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Can I get a motion? Is that a motion?
Oh, that's a motion.
Okay, can I have a second, please? Second. Great. So I have a motion by trustee Boulna and a second by VP Hernandez. Roll call, please. Oh, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Now discussion. Gotcha. So now we'll have discussion for, or request for pulled items.
Um, oh.
No, no, you can.
Okay, I have a question. So I'm going to pull V6. I want to make sure that that's the correct one. Ms. Dega, that's the one for the DCLC? I just want to make sure that's the correct one. Yeah, KPMG. Is that, is that V6? Doesn't come up on my screen, so I have vision issues. I want to make sure I'm pulling the correct one. And if President Henderson is going to leave for that item, is she going to participate? Okay. Okay, okay, that I'll pull them. Is that what you need? Okay, V6. I want to pull V6 for a separate vote, for a question and separate vote.
Any others?
So the board has asked to approve items M1 through Z4 with the exception of Z6 and the item M.
V.
V, V, excuse me, of V, excuse me, V6 and the items related to M2 and M4.
She can come back in. Gotcha.
Yeah, I don't want to pull an item, but I do want to make a comment about item O1, 2, and I'm sorry, item 2, 3, and 4. O2, 3, and 4. But, but I don't need it pulled for a separate vote. I just want to be able to make a comment before we vote.
So that would be now then, right? So then you would make the comment.
Do you want to make it now? Okay.
Well, trustee, would it be, I want to take the advice of our staff here. Why don't we just do M for a vote and then we can have everyone?
The recommendation?
I'll move that we, I know we have an existing motion on the floor. If the makers of the motion would consider allowing us to move M first, M of the consent calendar first, I'd make that motion.
Yeah, I, I agree to that.
Great. We can roll call that one. Roll call, please.
We need a second.
Oh, you were the second.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I have trustee Veras as the first, as the motion and trustee Boulna as a second. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson, recuse yourself. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Great. Now we'll bring President.
Oh.
Yeah. Already, yeah, first by VP.
Let the record reflect that Board President Henderson is back. And Ms. Henderson, there's been a couple of items for comment and then an item that's been pulled for separate vote. Thank you, Ms. President Ino.
So can I make my comments? All right. So I just want to make a comment about item O2, 3, and 3 CCAP agreements that are on this board agenda. So thank you, Dr. Alba Lopez and everyone else who was involved. Board President at the time, Vella and I, and President Barry Gribbins were able to visit with the Burbank Unified School District with their superintendent and several of their board members. And so this CCAP agreement is really exciting. And if you click on the attachment, we're able to offer just an amazing list of classes for our dual enrollment students. And the one thing that stood out to both of us about Burbank Unified is that they really want to find a way to get our students onto the campus of Valley College. And so thank you, Dr. Gribbins and your team for working on that. And I just think it's really exciting that we keep having more CCAP agreements. And we are, you know, embodying the Vision 2030 that Chancellor's Office has set out in terms of making sure our students are college-ready and involved in dual enrollment. So thank you, everybody. I just want to make that comment.
Madam Chef, I may offer to build on that. We have an increase in the number of students who are duly enrolled in our district. And I, I heard from Dr. Alba Lopez, they gave us a number of 20,000 students. 20,000 students. We got reported 15, it'd be two months ago. So again, thank you to the college presidents, your outreach teams, and this work of CCAP agreements that's laying the way for access to higher education. That, that's a good number. That's a full college somewhere, 20,000. So I wanted to applaud the work. Thank you.
Do you want to make a comment?
President Henderson? Is that okay? Oh, I did, I did want to also thank our advocacy team at Santa Maria Group because they actually, ironically, you know, and President Roman too. Because ironically, I was supposed to, you know, incentivize monobell. Because I was on the board for eight years, but it took, you know, kind of a heavy push from the advocacy teams and then also from President Roman. And we were able to do that one this year, I think our last board meeting. But that's the third largest school district in LA County. So serving, yeah, eight cities. So I was really, really happy about that. It's a good thing.
Let me ask, let me ask the record, I'm sorry, I stepped out. Did we have a first and a second on, on approving all items except for V6?
Trustee Hernandez.
Okay, so you can ask the roll call.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. So now we will open up V6, item V6 for discussion. I'll start down to my far right with.
May I list?
For student trustee Cordova.
I'm sorry, can we come back to me?
Sure. Trustee Boulna?
Yes, on V6. I'm, who, I know Ms. Dega, I've been communicating with you, but is Ms. Gordon here or online or? Okay. So here's my question. So this, this audit by the District Citizens Oversight Committee, again, the District Citizens Oversight Committee is a committee, is what is a, if I misstate something, please correct. Meant to be an oversight of the bonds, the different bonds. So they have the authority to request an audit. So from what I understand, the District Citizens Oversight Committee, the DCLC for short, they requested an audit regarding to the Exeter contract and I think something else, right? So this is called the KPMG Audit Engagement Letter. Okay. So as I'm looking at the letter, and thank you for answering some questions. Made life a little easier. In looking at engagement letter from KPMG that we signed, we signed that on 12/4/2023, it says audit, right? So here's the question, because sometimes words are words of art. I want to make sure that as they're hearing it, the DCLC, and I think you have a meeting on Friday. So here it says on page four of seven of the engagement letter, four of seven in the engagement letter. And that, and I'm going to quote and read from the section that's called Other Matters. It says KPMG services as described in the engagement letter constitute an advisory engagement conducted under the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants Standards for Consultant Services. Such services are not intended to be. Such services are not intended to be an audit examination. I'm going to stop there because it says specifically that they're not going to be an audit. Then they go on to say the scope of work does not require that K P M G make any legal representation. So I'm going to stop there and ask. So what was requested by the D C L C was an audit. Is there something different from what I'm reading? Because it says it's not an audit. What are we paying for? Either yourself or Ms. Gordon.
Thank you for that question, trustee Bona. So with respect to the entirety of the agreement, what you're reviewing is the engagement letter of services. And that's just with reference to the scope. However, if you notice that the actual scope in the professional service agreement for that is which is attached actually says that it is an audit and that it is going to follow the audit and special investigations reference to the handbook of D C O C. So what I understand is that it is a special audit. And with respect to the standards, I believe Ms. Gordon can probably reference if if your questions are about what standards are being utilized. With respect to legal representation or legal advice, so this particular audit was commissioned by the D C O C. It was not commissioned by my office, so therefore it's not a tourniquet work product for which legal legal services are being obtained through this. So no representation is being made.
Okay, so Ms. Gordon, did you want to answer anything or add anything or? Okay, so I'm just confused. Why, why we would sign, why we would sign, and I mean, this, this, this meeting is being recorded. So if you're the D C O C and you're listening to this conversation, the audit that you require, the audit that you are, that you were, that you requested is is going to be an audit, not under the standards in this engagement letter then?
So with respect to that, again, the scope of services exhibited exhibit B references the special investigations audit and references the D C O C handbook. So if you're asking whether the audit, first of all, this, this, as I understand, is a special investigation audit. And so with respect to your initial question about why would we have that language? Just like we have template provisions in our professional services agreement, which is the overarching prevailing agreement. And as you may notice in the professional services agreement, that is the operative agreement. And then the engagement letter is attached as an exhibit. It says that our terms are prevailing and controlling. So if that occurs, and and this is in the caption in red, at the very top of our agreement, that means anything that is in our agreement, which may have some conflict to that engagement letter, actually is the prevailing and controlling language that we operate this engagement upon.
Okay, so the engagement letter then really is immaterial.
The engagement letter, again, with respect to if there is no conflict with our professional services agreement, which has our general terms and conditions, does have some more detail as to what is being expected from our auditors. But with respect to your question about, well, is this an audit or not? Again, at the very top heading in red of our professional services agreement, it says that to the extent there is conflict, then our provisions prevail. And our controlling serve.
Okay, thank you very much. That's helpful.
BP Hernandez, do you have any?
No question.
Okay. Trustee Veras?
Yes, thank you. You know, it's been a number of years that this board of trustees had. We used to have liaisons to the district citizens oversight committee, and we haven't done that for a little while. But but in regard to this question, you know, what what is the fundamental relationship with this board of trustees and the district citizens oversight commission? I I asked the question because I think, oh, obviously, the D C O C is mandated by law for us to be there. At times, it's been criticized for not necessarily being independent enough in its assessment. There's been times, and I think even in this situation now, one of the members of the board of trustees is requesting materials there or or investigation analysis, whatever. But what which what is our standard, what should be our standard? And ultimately, if we wanted to make sure that we're in full compliance of the law and we're as supportive as possible for the citizens to participate in this committee to ensure, you know, appropriate oversight of the bond. Yeah, are the things that we're doing and approaching, you know, sort of current standard? Or would you recommend and with our facilities and everyone here to explore possibly liaison ships as in the past? Is there things to strengthen and assess in terms of this organization? And the relationship with the way we go through the appointing process and communication process with the board trustees? There's a lot, a lot in there, but you know, I mean, it's, it's, like I said, we're going through it with quote unquote bond monitor. Not all members of the board of trustees are receiving communications in the same kind of way. That's a challenge in itself, or communicating in the same direction. But it is an entity, and I think it's it's important to be knowledgeable. I think, you know, when, you know, and I'll step from my standpoint of the D C O C requests support, whether it's outside counsel, legal counsel investigation. I think I think it, you know, board's put in a position to approve or not approve. I think we should approve because we obviously want to have those entities there. But I don't know, I don't know what that relationship is and how that works. I'm not sure if even the state of California has that delineated. And so I guess what I'm trying to ask is, is there a best assess, is the function strong, well? Do we have standards in place? You're referencing a document that's that lists some procedures. Is this something that we, you know, we need to update? Do we need to consider sort of reassessing how these things work? Because I would like to say, I mean, they should have possibly their own budget and not come to us and put us in a position of saying yes or no to request that they have, because it would want to make sure it's a fully functioning district citizens oversight commission that can sort of lend its full voice and credence to with some level of independence. I mean, I know they're not designed in the state code to have full independence. But we want to have full confidence that those citizens that are appointed there can actually do work and not feel like they have to come to the board or not have things requested for the board or individual board members, but that instead they can operate robustly and operate with, you know, some form of of sort of quality and and, you know, and confidence from the outside and the inside. So, you know, like I said, this is one item. I don't know how it's functioning, if it needs a overall review, and maybe that's something that Chancellor, we should think about in terms of next year's or your goals and the board goals. But I think it's important to have high level confidence in in a citizens oversight committee like this.
So trustee Veras, I appreciate your comment and your question. So we do have a current board policy that speaks to the oversight committee. So if the board feels that there's some needed revision or change to it to be able to either provide the support that you speak about and to provide greater guidance as to the election of the oversight committee. I do recall in the past, we actually did have separate counsel, legal counsel for the D C O C, which I hope that when we go out for R F P for legal services next year, that we will add that as a class five to that R F P so that the D C O C does have their own separate legal counsel.
Okay, I think we should start there. And I think we should talk about, it's been a long time since those policies have been looked at and you know, we want to make sure we're all in in compliance with them and and again, to demonstrate to the to the to the public that the citizens oversight committee has, you know, real worth on this district.
Can I comment?
Yes, please.
If I just want to make sure that that last important comment is put into context. I believe we have reviewed the board policy and it was forwarded and enacted in its entirety. We haven't changed it. But it's time for a review and we'll happy to bring that back.
Trustee Vella and Hoffman, do you have any?
I don't have a comment. I have a question. So my understanding is that the district citizens oversight committee is an independent committee from the board of trustees?
It is an independent oversight committee that because we have a bond program after, under Prop thirty nine, we do have to have an oversight committee. However, it's not a separate legal entity for which it can contract, pay bills, or things of that nature. Trustee Vella.
So and it's appointed by the board of trustees, by recommendation, obviously, of, you know, the chancellor and then people in the industry. How? I guess the bigger question is, how would, how would it be appropriate moving forward for the district to receive updates? You know? For example, I mean, I handled the reports for it when I worked at the program, but I, you know, that was staffing the district oversight committee members themselves through the bill program. But I do not recall how the trustees get updates on what, for example, the agenda of the D C O C is, or even just any updates. How can we do that moving forward appropriately so that we're aware?
Let me take an initial view of that, then please add on. And the deputy chancellor attends every meeting of the D C O C as part of the portfolio. And the D C O C is asked to provide an annual report. And then the annual report is distributed and posted. And when that, but in if the board is interested, we can certainly like the way we did today with Odiah, bring those reports here as we do with the personnel commission and a whole variety of other important entities that work on behalf of this district. So that can, you can certainly discuss that and appropriate the time to discuss the good work of this volunteer group that is the D C O C.
Thank you, Chancellor. That'd be fantastic. And then also, do they report to F I M P O?
So that's, that's a great question, trustee Vella. I believe they should provide, they should be providing communications of their activities to F I M P O.
Okay.
So if that is not currently occurring, then I would suggest that there should be communications received.
That would be great.
From the D C O C.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I want to point out that Dr. Smith and his team regularly attends
Okay.
the D C O C so that there's liaison ship on the programming side. Reports are given, I think the group meets is a monthly or quarterly. And it's given to them regularly in terms of the projects, activities that really emanate from F I M P O during those reviews. So that's.
Okay, thank you. That'd be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Bona.
Yes, so I just wanted to say, I think the functions of the D C O C really focus on having the ability to request the audits, right, and hours and through statute. And they can visit the different programs and accept reports. But I'm not sure, and I'm glad we're going to have this conversation because I'm not sure that they have their staff for any of that. So we have to have, we have to have a full conversation on governance, on where we want them to actually do, right, whether, whether, whether separate counsel versus staff versus that, that, that relationship. Because through the statute, we can go beyond the statute. I think we're doing the minimum for this.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay, so now I will take a motion for to approve item V six.
I moved.
Okay, motion made by BP Hernandez. And second by trustee Veras. Lupe, roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
I'm going to refer my vote for this.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Now to item triple A, may I have a motion and a second to adopt business items A, A one through A A sixteen?
I'd like to pull.
Which one?
A A five, is it? Yeah, A A five.
Anyone else? Okay. We're both separate?
Yeah, for separate vote.
I move to approve the rest.
Thank you. My second.
Take that vote first.
Okay, Lupe, roll call, please.
Student?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Let me make clear, this is for to approve all items A A one through A A sixteen with the exception of A A five.
Yes, thank you.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Stepped out. Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
So.
Yes, A A five. We've got our director of marketing communications, Juliette Idalgo here. Vice President Hernandez.
Thank you, thank you. So I just, I have to make a few comments on this. This was originally, as you know, on the agenda for the November meeting before it got pulled after I raised some big concerns about trustees not getting enough information about this process. And I just want to say from the start, I really appreciate that the gesture of taking it off the agenda, and I appreciate staff providing a more detailed presentation in F I M P O. That was helpful to me. Anyone who's been following these meetings knows that from the presentation with Elder Tree a few months back, marketing is a really big issue for many trustees. It's critical to our district's enrollment success, and it's a really, really large chunk of money. And at the time that this was originally put on the agenda, I knew nothing about the firms on the bench, what they were offering, what innovation they were providing, how they were different from Elder Tree, what the recording requirements to the board would be, what the R F P asked for, et cetera. I would have expected that district staff would have engaged trustees much more with this work, anticipating that this would be a very big vote, vote. And I'm, I am very appreciative that this was pulled off in November and re-presented at F I M P O. Now I know more information on it and I'm excited about this R F P. But now we have a much larger issue that has come to light in regards to the process of how these R F P processes are conducted at the district, the oversight, and whether or not there is undue influence. And I'm going to just say it right now on the record, looking at the scoring irregularities of the sheriff's R F P, you know, my trust in this process is broken. And so here's the thing, you know, I pulled this item because I feel like I'm saying this at every single board meeting at this point. But we are part time trustees. All of us have full time jobs. We have no staff. We are approving billions of dollars in projects and expenditures each year with many times literally only the information that's placed on a publicly accessible agenda. There are no briefings. There are no heads up before the agenda is posted within the seventy two hours of the meeting. And so to have this little of information, you have to have extreme confidence that district staff can run a clean and above board R F P process. And right now I don't have that confidence. So unfortunately, this is really going to affect the really important work that we have to do, like this process. And I'm sorry that this is, you got caught in the crosshairs of of things that have come up. And it's going to require us how to figure out how to move forward. And so it is, it's really hard for me to vote for this item, given information that's come up. And I really need more information at this point on the process going into this R F P specifically. I'd like to see the scoring and be assured that there was no undue influence. As trustees, I recognize that we don't typically get those scores, and I typically wouldn't think that we would need them. But in light of some recent developments, I would just like a commitment, and I know you don't have that right now. So I would just like a commitment to see this, to be, have access to this so that I'm assured as a trustee that this process is clean and above board. And I recognize that this is really important work. So I, you know, I'm not this is hard for me to do. I'm willing to, you know, I I was going to say I'm not going to vote yes on this item. I'm willing to vote yes on it. I need to see that information coming forward. And I'd like to put forward two motions. And I would like to see these two motions pass. So the motion, and forgive me, because this is not necessarily related to this particular item, but it's, it's the larger issue. I have a motion that I'd like a written report back within ten days of the next L A C C D board meeting with more information regarding current, the current procurement process included but not limited to information regarding differences between the district and the L A C C D procurement process and the competitive bid R F P processes. Who manages the district R F P process? Who selects the evaluation pan? Who selects the evaluation panel? The scope of the evaluation panel? Who deems proposals responsive in a competitive bid process? Timelines for a competitive bid process and the procedures for notification and briefings to trustees throughout the competitive bid process? Don't worry, I have this written down, so we can put this on the record. And then I, a second motion, and we can separate these out, I, I just want to get this information out. I have a second motion, we can vote on these two separately, for the LACC D Board of Trustees to commission an external and independent audit to evaluate current procurement procedures, alignment with the district's current processes, and applicable federal, state, and local procurement law, identify best practices from similar large proprietary agencies, and compile recommendations for implementation of said practices. So I'm putting those motions out, you know, for president. Do with them what you want. I would like to vote on these, though, before we vote on this item for these motions. I'm not sure exactly the procedures on that, but.
You're not taking the members of the board a first and a second on this, the, excuse me, on this particular item? The number of it, so, yes. So you can, let me ask procedurally our general counsel, whether, if there are separate motions, or Vice President Ednandez, we can take both pieces in entirety as direction. There's no other objection to the, to me, and we'll get this done. The same impact will occur.
So I just want, so that I understand the motion, so it's to obviously request this report with all the information that you are requiring, correct? With respect to items, they can be directed to the, to the staff to be able to respond to. I don't know if there's a particular motion, but certainly if you would like to have this in the record, trustee Hernandez, you can go ahead and take the first motion, and then we'll take the second motion to have a first and a second.
General counsel, sorry to interrupt. What I was sharing was, this, this, this interest, I don't hear any objections from the board, Madam President, Vice President Ednandez. So if you're comfortable in the record, we will take this as a direction.
Yes.
Which means we'll get this done.
Mm-hmm.
Given precisely what you have measured in the record, so that will occur. Leave your need, I mean, motion piece and all that.
The question is, is it okay?
Do we vote on that, or we don't have to vote?
It's done. Absolutely. Of course, we love your notes.
Yes, direction to staff doesn't need.
Direction to staff doesn't need notice, whereas a vote does.
So as a result of this particular action item, you're directing staff for further information and clarification. So we can, you could do that from, without taking emotion. You could, yes.
Okay, so now we can just do, I can take a motion and everything on the item. Okay, was there any other discussion regarding AA five?
I do.
Okay, trustee Bona?
I think, you know, part of, I mean, part of the concern that trustee Ednandez mentioned, and bringing up the sheriff's contract, is kind of, and the fact is that the district academic senate, to an extent, had to do staff work. In looking at those scores and understanding that, that there's a problem, right? And that ultimate problem, our senior management should have picked it up. And that was straight out, at, at best, it's negligence. At absolutely best, it's negligence. So I'm going to support this, this motion, simply because I do believe that we need it. But I do believe that we're going to need, kind of like our technology port, is how do we make sure that our procurement component is blind with regard to influence, undue influence, and the ability to mitigate those and very audit-proof, so we could figure out those and actually have some consequences if senior management fail to do their job and actually look at those scores. Folks who did the sheriff's contract did a lot of great work. And, and this, and we're not saying anything bad is going to occur here, but it, it goes to our fiduciary, our fiduciary duty. So as we're talking about some of this, I, I think the report that we did about five years ago on technology, I think played out a lot, a lot of things. But it would be good, trustee Ednandez, to get the scope of work, what that, over your request, to understand that it goes sufficiently, you know, it's sufficiently full to articulate that we're going to have honest processes. So that, that's why I want to say, to add that, Chancellor, to make sure that, that some of the trustees who are, who probably all of us care about it, actually look at that scope.
I have one comment. Yeah, so I really want to, first of all, support trustee Ednandez and her assessment of, because it really isn't anything to do with Juliette. I mean, well, you know, we're fine-tuning it. But I do believe that the board needs to, in my opinion, really broadly revisit the way that our procurement is presented to the board. And I think what was fantastic about what happened in this case was that, you know, I suggested to, you know, Ms. Ednandez and the chancellor, the board president, that this then was presented in a committee. I don't know which committee it was presented, oh, ledge, okay. Because that, you know, gives us a little bit of a, kind of like a buffer between like, here's the RFP, and this is who's chosen, and now you approve it, board. It gives us some discussion, but I really want to expand on that. And I wouldn't even mind that it travels committees, especially something like, you know, a contract like this that could maybe touch upon, you know, facilities. Because what was interesting is that I wanted facilities to have access to some of this, you know, firms, because I really want facilities to be able to have some more support in telling the public about our wonderful milestones, you know, with our colleges and buildings and ribbon cuttings. And I know you guys are all working that out. I, I was just at one yesterday at Harvard, it was fantastic. But I think for me, I would really like for us, besides this, to really focus on creating a system that would buffer the board so that you don't come cold, or folks that handle these big RFPs. I mean, there are way bigger ones that are coming and that will come, at least at a, a way that it can be, you know, for better lack of words, vetted by some of the members of the board and various committees, so, or ad hocs, or board president, you know, says, hey, these trustees work to, you know, at least communicate with, with folks so that it doesn't come, you know, uncooked. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bona?
Yeah, one, one more thing. I, I think we also have to have a conversation about what the DAS and AFT threw there. I think they have like four hundred and fifty signatures by now. And we still have to look at what occurred during the sheriff's contract. That was, that, it was, again, Chancellor, what was the amount of money in that contract? Hundred million?
I'll answer the question, but I remind the board that the sheriff's contract is not on the public agenda. But the item is, it's about a twenty-five million dollar contract per year.
Point, point, point well taken. But Madam President, if we could look at a discussion as to what the DAS and AFT are asking for, because I think it goes in the same spirit, and, and especially looking at that contract to see if any laws were violated.
Thank you.
So now we will take, I'll take a motion on approving item AA five, including the directive to staff from, from BP Hernandez. So I have a motion.
So moved. Second.
So moved by trustee Bella and second by BP Hernandez. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues.
I just want to say thank you and congratulations to all three of you. I'm excited, so congratulations.
So next up, we have item BB. I guess before I take a motion, I can ask for if anyone wants to pull. Okay, do we have any questions or any, if any colleagues would like to pull or something regarding items BB one through BB twenty-one? Okay, well, I'll accept the motion and second to adopt the facilities items BB one through BB twenty-one.
So moved.
A motion made by BP Hernandez. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm going to do that. Okay, motion made by BP Ino and second by Ednandez. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
If I, I can also just note for the record here that there was, our elevator conversation is also included in this group of items here. So I know it's, appreciate and to Vice Chancellor Smith and his team for moving quickly to get going on this thing. And so hopefully President Roman can sort of be able to manage this with, and coverts with the district. So thank you all for, for working to get this quickly to an agreement and into action.
Thank you so much for that. On to item CC. Members of the board, before we prepare to vote on the next two action items in regards to employment actions, I will read the following language for the record. Pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, three, C three, which is part of the Brown Act, we are required to make an oral summary of proposed actions on the salary schedules or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for all executive level positions as defined in subdivision D of government code section three, five, one, one point one, during the open meeting, in which final action is to be taken. In our case, we need to provide such summary for positions such as the chancellor, deputy chancellor, vice chancellors, and the college presidents. The agenda item now before us includes employment action for Dr. Kathleen Burke, interim deputy chancellor, from January one, twenty twenty-four to June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Dr. Burke's salary will be step one at twenty-eight thousand ninety dollars and ninety-four cent per month of the, of the deputy chancellor's salary schedule, and she will be entitled to the same health and welfare benefits as are received by our other unrepresented administrators, including retiree health benefits. Dr. Burke will receive the five hundred dollar per month car allowance. May I have a motion and a second on item CC one?
So moved.
All second.
Thank you. A motion made by BP Ino and second by trustee Hoffman. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Next, item CC two is the employment action for Ms. Araceli Aguilar, interim president of LA Pierce College from January one through January thirty, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Aguilar's salary will be step four at twenty-two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cent per month of the vice chancellor and college president's salary schedule, and she will be entitled to the same health and welfare, welfare benefits as are received by other unrepresented administrators, including retiree benefits. Ms. Aguilar will receive the five hundred dollar per month car allowance. They have a motion and a second on item CC two.
Okay.
No second.
You move by trustee Bona and second by trustee Hoffman.
I, I do have a question. The dates, did I hear you say January twenty twenty-four, or what were those dates from?
January one through June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I, I, I didn't, I thought I did not hear the June component. So, thank you, that's it.
No problem. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
I have a quick question on, on this. Is there any way to extend her for like other years, so we don't have to come back? And just move her to step five at some point, or step six? I'm not being facetious, by the way, I mean, why are we like?
Again.
Okay, on to item DD. Next, we will move to recommendations from the chancellor. Chancellor, would you please provide a brief report on the next action?
Yes, Madam President, this matter resolves a correction that we need to make. It's for a resolution that authorizes the issuance of our two thousand eight election general obligation bond series. And so we made a correction when we asked you to approve it, what you did last month, it contained an error in the amount, so the correct amount is a hundred, one hundred and seventy-five million dollars for bond purchases from the two thousand eight authorization. And this concludes, by the way, interestingly, this particular measure J issuance from the year two thousand and eight. So, and these are the bond sales that we will conduct and have conducted. We asked our board to approve this, along with another, I believe it was two hundred, excuse me, three hundred million dollars as well. So anyway, this is a correction for the record, and the correct number is a hundred and seventy-five million dollars.
So moved.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona? Not present. Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
So moved.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona, not present. Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella? Trustee Veras? All second. Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Trustee, trustee, I did have one comment on this, if I can offer it. Thank you. And I understand sort of probably most of the interesting issues will be dealt with in the AP that would subsequently follow this, but I appreciate the staff following up on the resolution for the communities. I, I did want to sort of note that one of the things that's, that I think is important to add is the locally serving component of the resolution last time. Because I think as we come to create our fees that are reasonable, we may actually see organizations and groups from outside of our immediate service area want to take advantage. And I think if the presidents are stuck in a position of, you know, you don't want to say no if it's sort of a great organization, but sometimes we have to understand that the local is also paying additional property taxes for improvements to the facilities, and at the very least, they should have, when there's a tie, an opportunity or something to that effect, that you can have a local component that adds to the dialogue that we've had about disadvantaged youth and, and other kinds of things that we discussed in the last meeting. But if that, and I think that maybe resides in, in the BP as a general comment, and certainly the APs can figure out how exactly the colleges choose to implement that. But I do want to be cognizant of Santa Monica, El Camino, no offense, El Camino, and Glendale, no offense, El Camino or Glendale, that sometimes the fees that they are advertising and putting out may be above where we're at. And so to ensure that we can service our, our, our locals first, that, to state it forward, is, I think, important to me and was reflected in that resolution.
And the intent of the legislation?
Yes.
Thank you for that, trustee Veras. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Veras. I'm sorry, I should have spoken to the microphone. And the intent of the legislation that this district sponsored. of the legislation that this district sponsored and, and signed by the governor. So thank you for the important reminder. And in the AP process, these components will be included so that indeed a local, local support for the, for institutions that are supported through nonprofits can be, can be enabled, enacted. I wanted to make a comment. Again, this is an informative section. This is FF of two. I wanted to point out, next month, we will bring to your attention the second read of Board Policy 7120, which concerns the recruitment and hiring of district employees. And I wanted to point out the added language to the 7120 is the criterion, I quote, "and procedures for the ineligible and debarment of applicants for academic positions shall be established and implemented in accordance with the board policies and administrative procedures." So this is something that we're including, that if there, we'll put together procedures for barring applicants and, and essentially making them ineligible under certain criteria. So I wanted to point out that we're moving forward with some of the recommendations and discussions. So please, if we're able to act swiftly on that.
Thank you for that, Chancellor. So now, item GG. Would any of my colleagues like to make any announcements or indicate future proposed actions? Start down with student trustee.
I'm sorry. Yeah, based on my experience at the SSCCC, I realize that I have to get more involved with like state affairs. So I'm happy to announce that I will be at the March in March. So very excited to partner with AFT fifteen. I think I said that right. So yeah, I'm very excited for that. That's all for my future plans.
Right.
I'm going to reiterate, if we can agendize the academic senate and AFT's recommendation for two ribbon audit, if we can begin having.
Thank you. VP Hernandez?
No, nothing for me.
VP Ino?
Yes, we did start earlier on in the affinity celebrations, particularly with the APIDA celebration. And so in addition to that, I also plan to meet with the Chancellor and the API Advisory Committee in January to really start looking at programming. So we have something, a cohort or community really tied to that commencement or that celebration.
Okay. Trustee Veras? Trustee Vela?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah, thank you. I think Chancellor and trustee, you know, VP, you know, is there a way that we can invite trustee Cordova to the legislative conference in January? That's a really good place for students to also get involved with advocacy. And then happy to hear you're going to be at the March in March. But FAC also has a conference, and I don't know, the keeper, if you're going to be going to the FAC, Policy and Advocacy. If we could include our student trustee, they do a great training of students. I think that'd be really wonderful. You wish yourself as someone who is advocacy. And so very happy to go along. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Veras, do you have any information or announcements? Thank you. So now, item HH. The First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee and the performance of his or her duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than a private or unrelated matter. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board besides these one?
We just have the one.
So Mr. Rolando Cuevas, will you please come forward? You have the mic. Oh, and you have three minutes.
Don't start my clock yet. But before I start, Madam President, Lupe, do you tell me every minute, like three to two, when I get to my thirty seconds? Because I wish I had a clock in front of me. Let me put on my glasses. One second, Madam President. I need to be organized.
You want three minutes to speak and then three minutes to prep?
No, no. Hey, be nice. But the truth is here. So let me get. Put on my glasses. She looks sophisticated. Okay, here we go. Andrew Hoffman, the cat is out of the bag. Your carefully crafted image of being a champion of victims of sexual harassment and bullying is beginning to show cracks. For too long, you have been accused other people of...
Can't address particular...
Well, okay, timeout. Then stop my clock. So if I say a certain trustee, they're gonna get offended.
President Henderson, actually, Mr. Cuevas can make his statements with respect to a particular board member. It could be a public official or public employee.
Okay.
However, he's reminded that, again, based on our admonition, that defamatory statements are, are not protected by the First Amendment or the Brown Act. So therefore, it opens personal liability.
Okay.
And that's fine. And I read.
Lupe? Okay.
Ms. Diga, thank you very much. Remember, what I'm going to read out real quick to you comes from a report. It's them and me. It's a report, okay? So could I start over at three minutes? Okay, I got distracted. Okay. Andrew Hoffman, the cat is out of the bag. Your carefully crafted image of being a champion for victims of sexual harassment and bullying is beginning to show cracks. For too long, you've been accusing other people of bullying and intimidating when you yourself have been bullying and intimidating members of the LACC family and community. You can no longer hide behind the curtains of white privilege. My whistleblower complaint documents and demonstrates who you actually are. We now know that you inappropriately and purposely intervene on behalf of your personal friend, a senior staff member, after a Title IX sexual harassment complaint was filed. And before it was even investigated, you attempted to discredit and intimidate the victim into withdrawing the charges. You are fully aware that my statements are true and on the supporting documents attached to my whistleblower complaint sent to the interim general counsel and Dega and the entire board of trustees. The report shows you attempted to use your power to obstruct an ongoing sexual harassment investigation, and your actions forced the victim to file a retaliation claim under Title IX against trustee Hoffman. The district's handling of the retaliation complaint violated the spirit of Board Policy 6410, 6410, which dictates how the complaint against a trustee or chancellor should be handled, which led to the cover-up of Hoffman's inappropriate actions, which Policy 6410 was intended to avoid. She should be asked by the California Community College League members to step down and resign, and the LACC board should demand the same. You are not, you are not an advocate or a role model to lead or chair any commission or committee dealing with sexual harassment. How you weaponize the Title IX Sexual Harassment Committee to go after the victim clearly shows you do not care about the truth. And we know of other cases and instances where you still with the predators and enablers of sexual harassment by not holding them accountable. Okay? Now, one more thing. Trustees, can you listen to me, please? The old, the old DI committee back there did a great presentation. I'm going to let you guys know this. In 2016 KPCC, you could Google it, cited that sexual harassment under the chancellor doubled. At that time, it was only 27 cases. For it to go to 138, that's a, over 100% increase. Sarah Hernandez, your concern about the contracting, you're right. But he's your one employee. All your complaints fall on his desk. I know he can't know every detail, but when he finds out, that's where he's judged. So the contracting issues, sexual harassment issues, Merry Christmas and congratulations, Madam President. And when you think no one loves you guys, I love you each and one of you. Thank you.
Lupe, did we have anybody else that asked? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, so now item. Okay. So are there any members of the public that have signed up since the start of the meeting to address the board on closed session items, Lupe? Thank you so much. So now, the board will recess to closed session in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Sections 54954 in sequence, and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the posted closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.5. May I have a motion and a second to recess the folks that have been?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Ino?
Second.
By Cordova. Thank you so much. Roll call?
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.